Well, good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on May 7th, 2024. Everyone's present, but Councilmember Stedman and Councilmember Dunin are with us online. And with that, if you're able, can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also like to say our land acknowledgement that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Madison Creek, including the Nisqually Tribe and the Squawson Indian Tribe. Also, I'm looking for a motion to approve an amended agenda. We're going to amend the agenda to remove item 13B, the award recognition for the Washington State Association of Municipal Attorneys for a later date. And with that, can I get a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I would move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve this amended agenda and consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have approved our amended agenda. And first up on our approved amended agenda is a public comment. We didn't have anyone who signed up ahead of time or signed up just now for public comments. We did receive one written public comment, and we did have one person pre-registered on Zoom. Is that person available?
They are not available, Mayor, online.
They're not available. Okay. Is there anyone with us today that wish to address this council? Seeing none, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is proclamations. The first being the Historic Women's Olympic Marathon Trials Celebration Week. Start with Nick.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas on May 12th, 1984, the Greater Thurston County Community successfully hosted the event of the century, the first ever Women's Olympic Marathon Trials, which culminated in selecting three winners to represent the United States in the historic first ever International Olympic Games Women's Marathon. And?
Whereas prior to this event, for 88 years, women marathoners were explicitly denied the opportunity to compete in the Olympic Games Marathon event because of discriminatory views that women were unable to or should not complete, compete in marathons, in spite of women frequently doing so throughout the world. And?
Whereas at this event, a total of 238 outstanding dedicated women marathoners from throughout the United States made history by competing in the event, running along a course that included through the city of Lacey, along College Street, 45th Avenue, Ruttle Road, and Lacey Boulevard. And?
Whereas this event showcased community and regional pride and enthusiasm with participation from over 4,500 volunteers, the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County, St. Martin's College, intercity transit, state agencies, the local business community, hundreds of donors, runners, organizations, and more. And?
Whereas Joan Benoit Samuelson placed first in the women's trials, and on August 5th, 1984, in Los Angeles at the Olympic Games, Benoit Samuelson triumphed as the first women's marathon gold medalist in international Olympic game history. And?
Whereas this year marks the 40th year anniversary of this historic event and is being celebrated with a reunion in Olympia, at which Benoit Samuelson, fellow United States teammate Julie Brown, and more than 60 of the original 1984 competitors will be in attendance.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim the week of May 12th, 2024, as Historic Women's Olympic Marathon Trials Celebration Week in the city of Lacey, and encourage all community members to celebrate this significant monument in sports, which advanced sports equity and inspired countless future generations of women to pursue excellence in athletics and other endeavors. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And having grown up here in Lacey and being around at this time, this was a really big deal for our community. And so, so good to see you. But I remember the little markings all through town. It was a, it was a big deal. It put, you know, Lacey on, on the map, and it was a great pride for our community. So it's great to have this and accepting this proclamation.
Am I able to mention, am I able to mention?
Of course. Of course, please do. I'm going to give you a hug, too.
Thank you so much.
Here's proclamation.
Thank you.
Real quick.
Thank you. So I can say something?
Of course.
Thank you so much to the city council, and as, as Mayor Ryder so eloquently stated, this was a fabulous event. The ABC Wide World of Sports was here covering it. And I should back up to say that Mayor Mark Brown, I don't know if he was mayor at the time, but he was very active in this committee. His wife's name happened to be Julie Brown also. So he and the Olympic team member Julie Brown had a lot of fun with that while she was here. Also Karen Fraser, a former mayor of Lacey and council member, city council member, as well as county commissioner, et cetera. She was extremely active. She was in charge of the hospitality committee for the entire community. I want to mention that Olympia-Lacey-Tumwater flew to Philadelphia to go up against New York City, Los Angeles, Kansas City, and there was a fourth one, and to compete, to earn the right, to earn, get the right, bring it here. We were the smallest community by far to do this, even collectively. And despite that, Olympiak, Olympic Committee saw fit to award it to the Olympia area, and New York City did not like it one bit. And it was called the Olympic bidding ups, it was a bidding upset in the history of the Olympic Games. And after the trials were awarded to the Olympia area, in the months that followed and a lot of grousing, the Olympic Committee changed the rules, and a community of this size can no longer obtain a bid to host an Olympic Trials. So that's something I think is worth for all of us to remember. I want to briefly mention that we are having a banquet Friday night at Indian Summer, Friday night, May 17. Please, I have flyers, I'm going to leave some in here. Please take one. You want to be at this event. There's an Olympic gold medalist, Frank Shorter. Frank competed in the 1972 Olympics and won the only gold medal in the history of the Olympic Games in the men's Olympic Marathon. And he's going to be here that night, as well as Julie Brown, Joanie Benoit Samuelson. Sister Marion Irvine was 54. She was the oldest runner, Benedictine None, flew here from San Francisco. She is going to be here. She's 94.
Wow.
And is the most entertaining speaker you ever, ever heard. All of the women stayed here at St. Martin's in the dormitories, and I have photos. It was called the Olympic Village. So Lacey truly was very, very involved in this. I hope you will all go out of your way to at least attempt to come, spread the word. Our Olympic, our group is called the Olympia Trials Legacy Committee. We have a Facebook page, and we have the event listed at the top with all the activities going on. Your opportunities to meet the women will be on that Friday night, May 17 at Indian Summer. Banquet starts at 5:00, well, social hour, and then banquet at 6:00. And then Saturday from noon to 5:00, you can come down to Sylvester Park in downtown Olympia. We always, our committee always ties our events in with the Capital City Marathon activities. And that's the day all the runners are picking up their race bibs and things. So you can bring your child, your grandchild, your, your adult children, maybe whoever, and bring them down. And so they get a chance to meet the athletes and get a signature. Our committee has a couple of posters that you can pick up at no cost. And so we hope you'll be there. And I just want to, on behalf of the committee, we feel so honored that you're willing to do this. And I want to mention two other special guests. We're going to have Marilyn Bevins, who was the first black woman to run a marathon in the United States officially. And she was placed in the Black Marathoners Hall of Fame in 1977. She will be here. So will Shannon George, who's a woman professor from Temple University. And she's flying out here. She's on the, I'm going to get the name wrong, but it's the Black Female Athletes Sports Foundation for the U.S. And she's flying out here because she didn't want to miss the event. Please be there. I appreciate it so much. And if you want to hear some of the interviews, KGY Radio 95.3 has interviews of these people on demand on their Facebook page. I encourage you to go and just listen to, to the interviews. So thank you again. I appreciate it so much.
Thank you, Denise. Denise was instrumental in us having the Olympic Trials here. So thank you for all you've done for that, putting us on the map, and of course, everything you continue to have done for Lacey, and we really appreciate it. I just got word that our person for public comment is online. I think if this is all right with this council, can we go to that person now?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please introduce yourself and, please introduce yourself and keep your comments about three minutes.
Okay. I'm Stephanie Newman. I'm from Lacey, Washington. And I'm here to address the ADA compliance for the evenings at the depot. I recently received yesterday, May 6th, an email from Wesley Nguyen stating, and I quote, "As for the night market, which is on the other side of the parking lot, these events are temporary, and therefore we don't have any current plan to make this spot ADA compliant. I apologize in advance for any inconvenience." And what I would like to say regarding that is that the city of Lacey has a requirement per the ADA Title II to provide equal opportunity access for all citizens, for all activities, regardless of the location, for all events, to have an accessible route. So regardless of the fact that this property is, you know, kind of like in waiting for the museum, it doesn't matter where your event is held, that you need to provide an accessible route for the disabled community, such as myself, who has mobility issues. And right now, the way I feel that, as a result of this action, is I feel I've been discriminated against and segregated out of a community of a protected class of citizens. And I would like to really enjoy those evenings at the depot, and I currently cannot do that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Stephanie. I appreciate you reaching out to us. We just were, heard of your concerns, and I know that we're having some conversations about. So I know you received an email, and we'll still be in touch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Onto our next proclamation, which is Bicycle Month.
City of Lacey Proclamation. Whereas transportation accounts for about one-third of energy use in Washington State and about half of our CO2 emissions from fossil fuels. And?
Whereas bicycle commuting reduces energy consumption, pollution, parking problems, and traffic congestion. And?
Whereas bicycling makes people healthier and more productive, prevents chronic diseases through physical activity, and supports physical, emotional, and mental well-being. And?
Whereas the city of Lacey has adopted a pedestrian and bicycle plan to prioritize and encourage bicycle and pedestrian trips by providing a safe, well-connected, and convenient bicycle and pedestrian circulation network throughout the city. And?
Whereas the city of Lacey encourages and supports pedestrian and bicycle facilities to our development standards. And?
Whereas intercity transit, with sponsors including many area businesses and organizations, is hosting the 36th Annual Bicycle Community Challenge in May 2024. And?
Now, therefore, in recognition of the 67th National Bike Month, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim May 2024 as Bicycle Month in the city of Lacey. I encourage all community members to consider using active recreation and transportation when possible. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And I see Duncan's with us online from InterCity Transit.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity. For the record, my name's Duncan Green, and I'm here representing InterCity Transit and the Thurston County Bicycle Community Challenge. Thank you, Mayor Ryder and council, for proclaiming May as Bike Month in the city of Lacey. Since 1988, the BCC has been encouraging people to use a bicycle for some of their transportation needs instead of driving. As a result of the recent changes in how we work and commute, we've opened the challenge up to our whole community and to all reasons for biking, to involve more people, encourage them to enjoy and benefit from all the good things that riding a bike can bring, both individually and as a community. May is also National Bike Month, as noted in the proclamation. The month-long Bicycle Community Challenge is our local celebration, along with Bike to Work or Anywhere Day, which we celebrate on Thursday, May 16th this year. So a week from Thursday, we'll have six bike refresher stations in Lacey and Olympia with free coffee, treats, bike info, and giveaway items from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. on that Thursday morning. You can get all the information about that at bcc.intercitytransit.com. Of course, we hope that recreational riding can open the door for some people to try riding for transportation as well. Bicycling for health and fun is beneficial to individual and community health and well-being, and riding a bike to get around only increases those benefits. This year's theme for the BCC, we have a new theme each year, is many riders, many reasons, one planet. To bring our attention back to the earth under our feet, our diverse community, and our finite global home. The BCC and all our events are free of charge, and everyone is encouraged to participate. We have over 40 local and regional sponsors supporting the BCC with everything from donated prize items, discount coupons, and free passes, support for our events, and more. So we have lots of great prizes and amazing community support. It's time to ride in the Bicycle Community Challenge to celebrate our planet and our 37th year of promoting bicycling in Thurston County. It's easy to participate as an individual or as a member of a team. Just go to bcc.intercitytransit.com to sign up or log into your existing account. The City of Lacey team is called In It to Spin It. So if you go on there and you want to register for City of Lacey and add your miles to your team's totals, that's the team to choose. In It to Spin It. Feel free to reach out to me at any time if you have any questions. My email is dgreen@intercitytransit.com. And I'm also happy to answer any questions you might have now. So thanks so much.
Questions? Go ahead.
This isn't a question. I just wanted to announce that I've got three rides in so far this month, Duncan. So I'm, I'm in it to win it, even though I'm not on the Lacey team because my other employer has a team as well.
Well, thank you. And we look forward to this month every year, so we can get out on our bicycles. And luckily, this weather is going to hopefully cooperate, and we're going to have some beautiful weather this weekend. So it's a great time to get out on your bike. So thank you, Duncan.
All right. Thanks so much.
So this is proclamation day here in the city of Lacey. We have three more proclamations. And our next proclamation is the Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas the observation began in 1977 as Pacific Asian American Week, and in 1992, Congress officially designated the month of May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. Calling upon all people of the United States to observe this time with ceremonies, activities, and programs. And?
Whereas with this proclamation, we celebrate a diversity of cultures and people, including individuals from the entire Asian continent, including China, Vietnam, Korea, Japan, Philippines, India, Pakistan, and more, Pacific Islands of Melanesia, including New Guinea, New Caledonia, Vanuatu, Fiji, and the Solomon Islands, Micronesia, including Marianas, Guam, Wake Island, Palau, Marshall Islands, Kiribati, Nuaro, and the Federated States of Micronesia, and Polynesia, including New Zealand, Hawaiian Islands, Rattuma, Midway Islands, Samoa, American Samoa, Tonga, Tuvalu, Cook Islands, French Polynesia, and Easter Island. And?
Whereas in Washington, people of Asian, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander descent have lived and worked for more than 200 years, and in 2024, represent 11.25% of Washingtonians and 11% of the population of the city of Lacey. And?
Whereas Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we honor and celebrate the legacy, rich heritage, and incredible strength and resiliency of our community members of Asia, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander descent, and celebrate their countless achievements and contributions to the advancement of the United States and the city of Lacey, including but not limited to serving in our armed forces as elected officials, public servants, essential workers, teachers, business owners, cultural and creative industry leaders, and innovators. And?
Whereas the city also recognizes that throughout our history, individuals and communities of Asian, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander descent have been the target of violence, discrimination, disenfranchisement, efforts to restrict immigration, immigration, and other xenophobic policies at the federal, state, and local level. And?
Whereas the city of Lacey is dedicated to creating an equitable, inclusive, and welcoming community for all. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, proclaim May 2024 as Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month in the city of Lacey, and encourage all community members to celebrate and learn more about our Asian, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities and their histories and contributions to our city and society. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. And from the bottom of my heart, thank you for all you do for our community and for the United States. And to accept this, we have a couple people. Oh, Brian.
Mayor Ryder, tonight, by some of the members of the Asian Pacific Islander community.
Absolutely. Come on, come on up.
I have members of the Chukies community, the Japanese American Citizens League. And I think that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, let's get a picture in here.
Photo op.
Photo op. Come on, guys.
Scoot in, scoot in, scoot in. Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Members of the city council, thank you very much for the proclamation. For the record, I'm Brian Locke, co-chair of the Asian Pacific Islander Coalition of South Peget Sound. Been doing that for nearly 20 years now. My co-chair, Lynn Crowley, is actually speaking at your counterparts with the city of Olympia. As mentioned, the Asian Pacific Islander community here in Thurston County and the city of Lacey have nearly a 200-year history here. And to recognize some of the accomplishments, we are hosting a Asian Pacific Islander Heritage Month celebration on May 11th at South Peget Sound Community College in Lacey at 4226 Avenue Southeast. I would like to leave a few of these announcements here at a table and invite everyone to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, two more. Our next one is the Lacey History Month and annual museum update.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas the history of Lacey begins with the Coast Salish people, specifically Southern Lushutseed speakers, the Nisqually and Squawson Island tribes, who have lived here since time immemorial and are still here today. And?
Whereas early American settlers traveled in covered wagons, including the first settlers in Lacey, David and Elizabeth Harrison Chambers, who arrived in 1845, and whose property became the Mountain View Golf Course, the Mountain View Rodeo, and eventually Panorama. And?
Whereas the Northern Pacific Railroad reached the rural farming community of Woodland in 1889 and built a depot service to it, bringing a hotel, school district, platted subdivision, and racetrack. And in 1891, a post office was established with the new name of Lacey to avoid confusion with another town in the state. And?
Whereas in 1895, St. Martin's College opened its doors, and on its campus in 1922, KGY Radio received one of its earliest radio licenses in the state of Washington. And?
Whereas in the mid 20th century, many black people arriving in Thurston County faced housing discrimination and challenges and redlining. They lived in Lacey, which was without racially restricted covenants. And?
Whereas a group of local business owners and representatives from the North Thurston School District, the Lacey Fire District, and the Lacey Area Chamber of Commerce joined forces to prevent annexation into Olympia. And through a vote of its residents, the city of Lacey was incorporated on December 5th, 1966. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacey, hereby proclaim the month of May 2024 to be Lacey History Month. And further, I encourage all community members to join me in discovering and celebrating Lacey's longstanding vibrant history during this month of May and throughout the year. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. Aaron?
Jim, where are you? Come on.
Come on, buddy, Jim. Got to get a picture in.
All right. There we are. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Council members and attendees, both those who are online and everyone who is here, thank you so much for helping us to celebrate May as Lacey History Month. I'd like to acknowledge the members of Lacey Historical Commission, Jim Keough, our historical commission chair, who was up here with me. And then hopefully, some of them are online. I'm not sure who is, so I'll just share with you. Oh, there you are. Hi, Kevin. Kevin Wyckoff, our vice chair. We also have Alan Tyler, Kimberly Getz, oh, and John Hoverson, Tulai Paten, Ed Holm, and our youth representative, Rory Line. So whoever is present, please stand up, and we'll give you a round of applause. Thank you, guys, so much for your service. We really appreciate it. So tonight, we're going to share with you a little bit of what we have been up to at the museum in the last year, some things we've got in the works. And as is our annual tradition, we will be announcing the Ken Ballsley Historian of the Year at the end of the presentation. So, slide, oh, I have it. Which button? This one. There we go. Maybe? Hello?
Can you do it, Shannon?
Ah, there we go. So we are just wrapping up our 2023-2024 season of History Talks, which is our sixth season. This is our popular program where we which is our sixth season. This is our popular program where we bring in speakers on topics of local, state, or national history. It's taken a bit of time for us to get our numbers back up to pre-COVID levels, but we're now exceeding those, and we have retained a large number of following people, following from our online participants. And it's also a great option for those who can't attend when the weather is bad, or it's, you know, getting dark. So on this slide, I've included a couple of photos from my favorite presentations from the season. In March, we had Rabbi Seth Goldstein from Temple Beth Hat Filo in Olympia sharing with us the history of the Jewish community in our area, which was really fascinating. And last month, we had Lynn Groatsky and Lisa Brodoff, who shared their story of a two-year court battle that secured parenting rights for themselves and for all other same-sex couples in the state of Washington. And then that extended throughout the nation, and their their ruling was used as a model for other states. It was the first time that they had told their whole story publicly, and it was a night of cheers, applause, and tears that those who attended won't soon forget. And if you missed it, you can catch it on YouTube, just like the 200 other people who've already done that since it happened. So one of the great things about having our programs online is that we get to record them, and so that extends our reach. So for example, the current season has had almost 500 people attend live, and then so far another 400 have watched on YouTube. So, and people continue to watch years later, as evidenced by our total YouTube viewing of this series of programs of 11,000 people. So, it reaches quite a lot that way. So that works out to about 250 per program. So that's pretty cool. Alright. And I hope you will join us tomorrow night for our last History Talk of the season. Lester Dixon will be joining us to share the evolution of the Prince Hall Freemasons, which is the oldest and largest predominantly African-American fraternity in the United States. And he will include its introduction into the state of Washington and expansion into the city of Lacey. I think that will be really interesting, too. Looking forward to it. So, one of my favorite parts of my job is that I get to answer people's curiosity questions. Helping them research their family or find a photo. So this was a question that I had recently. So why is it called Mushroom Corner on this 1937 map if Ostrom's Mushroom Farm didn't move to Lacey until 1967? So we're of course referring to the corner of Marvin Road and Stilliken Boulevard, which is right across from The Rack. And I was curious about this, too. As it turns out, there was a series of mushroom farm owners at that location. Here's a picture of the very exciting mushroom factory. So it was started by William Riley Ritchie. He started it in 1933 with the name appropriately, Ritchie Mushroom Farm. They had a bunch of contentious wrangling with stockholders, which ended that. And that led to the sale of it in 1937 to Grocery Products Manufacturing. It operated until 1940, and then it was dormant for about four years. And then the Mushroom Farm was purchased by Michigan Mushroom Company in 1945, and was known locally as Olympia Mushroom Farms, as so many Lacey things were known as Olympia things. Green Giant bought out Michigan Mushroom in April of 1961, and then Ostrom's purchased it in 1967 from Green Giant. And 2019 ended 85 years of mushroom farming in Lacey. A big highlight of 2024 was the rejuvenation of the Lacey Historical Society, and I know we have a lot of members here today. The former board, after years of devoted service, were moving on to other things, and it wasn't certain that the society would be able to continue. A new crop of Lacey history enthusiasts stepped up to keep the organization going. And as their parting gift, the former board gave the organization's archives to the museum in addition to two major financial donations. They gave us $5,000 for an interpretive marker at the Jacob Smith House, and $50,000 for museum exhibits, outreach, or collections. And we're very optimistic that the Lacey Historical Society will have many more years of service in its future, and we're very grateful to them for their work. So museum staff have been working hard this year on developing a professional exhibit program. We established a pattern of changing exhibits by using low or free, low-cost or free exhibits, which brought new people to the museum and improved our attendance. However, there is a limit to the number of free and low-cost exhibits that will fit into our tiny little space. And so the solution to that is of course to build our own exhibits using our own collections, which has always been our plan for the new museum anyway. And so to prepare the space for exhibits, some minor physical improvements have been made to the front room gallery. This is a couple of pictures of the before. And then those blue and gray fabric panels that are on the walls, those have been removed. Old window coverings that were mounted with some thin wooden dowels that were starting to warp, we took those out. And the walls were in need of a fresh coat of paint. We did that, too. And so that's what it looks like now. With some new paint on our flat walls, we got new blinds and some new cases along the back wall. We're still working on improving the lighting, and we've got some other ideas. I want to thank museum staff Felicia Rova Cameron and Olivia Moore for all their enthusiasm and the hard work they've put in to make the museum shine for our visitors. So, we have a mini exhibit opening soon called Live from Lacey in the Works, featuring two Lacey greats, the Evergreen Ballroom and KGY Radio, which will be opening in the next few weeks. Meanwhile, we are working on a larger full gallery exhibit on early aviation slated to open early 2025. We're really excited about this exhibit because there are so many amazing things that happened in the Lacey area to further aviation. Just as one example, St. Martin's hosted a groundbreaking pilot training program in the late 1930s, leading to the first women students and instructors at the school, and helping to lay the foundation for FDR's civilian pilot training program as the US prepared for World War II. But probably the most important work we've been doing this year is with our stories of the South Sound project. And I thought it would be best if you heard about this from our museum staff, since it was their idea and they're doing it. So I'm going to introduce to you Museum Coordinator Felicia Rova Cameron, and recently promoted Recreation Coordinator Fulton Bryant Anderson.
Okay, I'm actually very excited to share this project with you all. So I guess I'll start with why we decided to do this project. The idea for Stories of the South Sound Oral History Project first came about when thinking of ways we can include more community voices in our space. And it was very clear that the histories we currently have at the Lacey Museum that are used for exhibits and educational resources were lacking representation of our local communities. So the Oral History Project became the program where we could begin to change that and in turn build sustainable relationships with our communities. The purpose of the project is to create accessibility to the diverse stories of the South Sound area. This project idea actually started in March 2023, and I brought it up to Erin, and she was fully supportive of it. So we moved forward with it. And in July 2023, we were awarded the Diversity in Local History Grant from the Washington State Historical Society, which helped us fund an Oral History Project intern position through June 2024. We hired Fulton near the end of September in 2023, and Fulton and I began to identify community groups that we could reach out to. Fulton then began reaching out to various community members to promote the project, to see if there was interest, or if there were potential connections to be made. In November and December, Fulton focused on marketing the project through different avenues and reaching out to people who may be interested in participating. And then January to present, we have met with community members that have chosen to participate, and we are actually still in the interview process at the moment. So I will actually pass this over to Fulton now, and he's going to give a bit more detail about our process with this project.
Hey, everyone. I'm Fulton Bryant Anderson, the Oral History Intern for the Stories of the South Sound Oral History Project. So I'm going to talk about some of the marketing, outreach, and connecting approaches of this project. And I think within this project, it's really important to notice that there are both successes and difficulties along the way, and that this is a continuous process that's always being remade as we connect with more community members to hear what they want and what they need in the community to have their voice fully heard in the museum space. And I think, you know, a lot of this work is really important to happen into our city values. As, you know, museum workers, we often think of ourselves as stewards of the past, like how other city employees are stewards of our community. So it's really important that we do this work honestly with integrity, and building these connections really, I think, is a way to form empathy and also serve our community in interesting ways. So first, I'm going to talk about marketing and outreach, and then what it was like to actually meet with folks. So right here, we have some examples of the marketing and outreach. We use two kind of methods here, more current, you could say, digital hip, popular methods, like social media reels. So we modeled oral history questions with folks like Cody Lee in the Parks Department, and also Lauren Young. And then Felicia and I did some more creative ones, describing what oral histories are with Man on the Street, a KGY Radio character from way back in the day. And that's actually a cutout from our collections that we hauled downstairs from our storage space. It was quite an experience, but if you can get on social media, Instagram, Facebook, I'd check it out. I'm pretty proud of the voice I created for Man on the Street, based off of my own creativity. But the importance of this work wasn't only just making these fun reels, kind of showcasing what's going on, but I dove into archival collections to find photos of underrepresented and marginalized groups in our community. It's important to recognize that in our community that folks have been here forever, that aren't just white. And particularly for me as a white passing Filipino, it's important to recognize the nuances within our community and understand who we are, where we are, and where we've been. And additionally, we got into some more traditional methods, as you can see on the slides here, tabling, posters, distributing them. And the interesting part about this was these traditional methods of reaching out to folks, it was like pitching an idea, but also not pitching, because we're working with them to hear what they want to say and what they want to share, and what's important for their identity and their community. So it was very open-ended, just like, what do you want to talk about? What's your experience? And it's not always about living here in the South Sound, but really their connection to the South Sound, whether that's a story of joy or pain. However, I think it's really important that we not only record stories of pain, but also joy. I feel like there can be a lot of trauma that's just produced from when you talk to people that have been in a marginalized or underrepresented group. So it's important to capture the good moments and record those, because we all live in euphoric moments, I think. And the really cool part about the traditional methods, I think, of reaching out was this word-of-mouth piece. It started to generate buzz, I think. Maybe that was just my own circle, but I remember dropping posters off at the Timberland Library just next door, and one of the employees there was like, hey, my friend is interested in this. What's your email? I'm like, okay, here it is. So that was super exciting. But switching gears here, now that we've talked about outreach and that method, I really want to dive into the bulk of what this project was, and it was building connections with community. And I want to preface that by saying that building these connections is still ongoing, and that we're learning along the way. Oh, perfect. Okay. So I kind of covered, oh, go back. It's a little too hot there on the clicker. Okay. So I talked about step one. Now I'm going to do steps two through four, building connections. So what we did was project introductions. I'd simply have a phone call or Zoom call with folks and ask about their interest and clarify any questions they had. And this process was about meeting folks where they are. It required being really flexible and not sticking to my 16, 18 hours a week, you know, Tuesday through Thursday. I had to go outside of office hours to really meet people where they are. I think that's really important in this oral history process, because you're yielding to folks that are telling their stories and being very vulnerable. We let them kind of guide that process. And after they were comfortable and wanted to do the project with like verbal consent, we developed some questions lists and some topics and themes that we'd like to talk about. And that questions list and those themes were based on their own interests as well. We're not like, hey, we're going to take your story from you or ask you about these specific things in your life. We wanted to make sure that they're sharing what they want to share and what's comfortable. And if anything was ever uncomfortable at any moment, which we'll get into with the interviews, they could just say no comment and pass, and we'd move on professionally and make sure that everything's alright. And within those future meetings, we also created a waiver for them to sign to ensure that everything is copacetic logistically, and ensuring that it's all suited for our museum archives and practices there. And I really want to get into this concept of guided, being guided by yielding to someone or active listening, and slash or active listening. By yielding, I mean basically taking a step back and letting them dictate how that oral history is going to look. And one of the quotes that always rings in my head that Felicia brought up, who studied oral histories in grad school, is working when a community is ready. If someone is not ready, don't push it. You can still maintain that connection and build it as time continues on. And I think when a community is ready is not up to me, the city employee, but when the community is there and when they reach back out to me. So that was a really, really important part of this process. And I'll go quickly into two examples. One was with the Evergreen State College and their welcome house, the Indigenous longhouse out there that hosts all sorts of art, educational opportunities for our community. We, I was speaking with a program specialist out there, Mary, and she invited me to an Indigenous art market in December, holiday art market. And she told me what her perspective was as an Indigenous person, and it relates to this idea of when a community is ready. She told me that, you know, I can't speak on the other stories here, because she's Makah in the Squally Squaxton Island, and Pualap were predominantly in this area. So that taught me that like, I can't just go and collect and make a to-do list of all the different identities. I have to really foster these relationships. And she cautioned me on a word I think that is really important for this project. I brought up capture, and she's like, don't say capture. That invokes ideas of white settler colonialism and colonization, and forcefully taking land and identity and property from folks. And the more I looked into that is, how can I, as someone who's white passing, de-center my own whiteness in this space and make sure that I'm coming at these stories from a place of care, caution, and yielding and listening to someone completely? And that was a really tough part of the project. I was kind of at like, oh, have I been doing this whole thing wrong? But, you know, it all comes back to when a community is ready. And the second point of this, another person we talked to was Dr. Thoma Jackson. She invited both Felicia and the museum staff, all of us, to the Black History Month Museum at New Life Baptist Church. Highly recommend it if you can check it out next year. It was amazing. And being in that community space and seeing it operate and just meeting and connecting with people really fostered a sense of that we're doing the right thing and listening to our community. And I think it's important to be present in those spaces. And I also went to the Martin Luther King Jr. Celebration on January 15th. That was equally powerful. But it wasn't those events happening. We had to meet one-on-one with Dr. Thoma Jackson. And I must say, her advice, clarity, and her effort to, I guess, affirm that notion of building a relationship and making sure that it's continued work. It doesn't stop after this project. And the infrastructure that Felicia and I are creating with the project will allow Stories of the South Sound to continue. And to kind of wrap this up, this whole project of building connections, I think, is really about empathy and integrity and stewardship. We're coming in from a place where we have all of this formal training on how to collect stories or work in the museum, but to actually apply that, it requires listening to your community every step of the way and letting them drive their stories, because it is their stories. And to recap, I talked a bit about marketing and outreach, connecting in traditional and digital ways, and building authentic connections. And I hope this sets a trend within our community, and it grows the oral history work as a way that's expansive and not just someone asking questions, but actively listening to questions that folks want to have answered about their story. And before I toss it back to Felicia, we put together this quick little edit, very quick, of an oral history with a local employee across the street at St. quick, of an oral history with a local employee across the street at St. Martin's, Nadra. She talks a little bit about growing up in Port Orchard, and it's just spliced together from a couple of different segments of her interview. We'll need to press play here. Thank you.
Technically born in Oakland, California. A lot of my growing up actually happened here in Washington State because my dad was in the military. So growing up was really indicative of kind of the spaces that I inhabit now. I was, it was not uncommon that I'd be the only one who looks like me in most of my classes. The only time I seen other people of color or anyone else black was probably in home spaces, so it was spaces like.
Yeah, we'll have to come back to that. Sorry about that. Anyways, here's Felicia to talk more about the oral history project.
Okay, so on here it says we have 12 narrators scheduled for interviews. We've actually already interviewed seven of those, and we are in the process. Like I had mentioned earlier, we're still interviewing folks. I also want to mention Memory Lab. So you might be wondering, what is Memory Lab since we're talking about stories of the South Sound? Memory Lab is a pop-up oral history program that came about through stories of the South Sound. It's a program where a community is invited to participate in quick three-to-five question interviews with the Lacy Museum to share their stories and experiences. This is a more informal-style interview compared to stories of the South Sound. The program can also be held at the museum or out in community events where we're tabling. We have completed 10 short-form interviews for Memory Lab, and the majority of these are from tabling at cultural celebration. We will be at the Asian American Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month Celebration at the South Puget Sound Community College that was mentioned earlier, and we will be at Juneteenth as well. So community members are encouraged to stop by the Memory Lab booth. Next step, so obviously, complete those interviews that we have scheduled. And then we are also in the process of editing the oral histories by adding the subtitles to make those accessible. We will have these on display at the museum when they are completed. And then we will have them, shorter versions available at the museum, but the full interviews will be available in our collection. And lastly, the grant period for Stories of the South Sound does end in June, but this will be an ongoing project that the Lacy Museum will run because it is very important to us to continuously connect and learn from our community.
Thank you, guys. I've got some great stuff. Good job, you guys. All right, so moving on from museum, last but certainly not least by any means, a significant part of Lacy History Month is that each year, the Lacy Historical Commission considers nominations of individuals or organizations who have made a significant contribution to preserve or promote Lacy's history. Last year, the commission renamed it the Ken Ballsley Lacy Historian of the Year Award to honor its founder pictured here. He would love this. Recipients of the Lacy Historian of the Year Award have included all of these people on this slide, all these amazing honorees, including last year's recipient, Dr. Thelma Jackson. I don't see any past people, but if there is anyone, you could raise your hand. Nope. Every now and then, people show up and want to acknowledge them. All right, so tonight, we are presenting the 2024 Ken Ballsley Lacy Historian of the Year Award to Paul Webb. Paul had the unique distinction of receiving three nominations for this award, as well as a letter of support from Fire Chief Steve Brooks. I'm going to paraphrase now what one of the nominators said about him. The Lacy Fire Department celebrates its 75th anniversary of service to the community this year, and one could say that Paul Webb was born to write the history of the Lacy Fire Department. Paul is the son of Richard Webb, a founding member of the Lacy Fire Department and who also served on Lacy's first city council. Born in Lacy's historic neighborhood, Paul followed in his father's footsteps, serving 45 years in fire service. Paul spent thousands of hours researching early Lacy, the Lacy Fire Department, and its service club origins. And his research culminated into a fascinating and lively book called History of the Lacy Fire Department: The First Decade. Paul's commitment to the history and preservation of Lacy are not limited to the fire service. In 2023, he was one of those enthusiastic people who stepped up with other volunteers to ensure that the Lacy Historical Society would continue. And we certainly agree with the people who nominated him that he is very deserving of this award. And I would now like to invite Jim Keough, Chair of the Historical Commission, to present the award to Paul.
You can hardly read anything about early Lacy without realizing how important the Fire Department was to the formation of the community here and ultimately the incorporation of Lacy as a city. Richard, as Erin has noted, Richard, Paul's father was very heavily involved in both of those efforts, and Paul's carried on that legacy, both in the writing and researching of the book that he put out, his fire service, and subsequently in his service with the Lacy Historic Society. So it's my great pleasure to invite Paul up here so that we might award him the Ken Ballsley Lacy History, Lacy History Award to this year.
Thank you very much. And Erin, I want to take the opportunity to thank you as well. When I started putting together this book, Erin was one of the folks that I contacted initially and got reams of information from her. It was very helpful. I know I've mentioned that in the book, and I want to mention it here tonight. And so thank you very much, Erin. Thank you for Mayor Ryder for hosting this tonight and allowing some of my friends to come in and witness it. And certainly, I want to thank the members of the commission that affirmed their, affirmed the confirmation or confirmed the nomination of this important piece of Lacy's history. And also, I want to thank my friends in the society that are here. I no longer am a trustee with the society, but I'm still active with their newsletter and some of those people that work with me on the newsletter, I think, were the culprits in getting the nomination put together. I want to thank them. Margie Wiley certainly started a friendship with Margie when she found out I did the book, and Turner's Market, of course, was a big piece of that. She was doing some stories about other markets in the area, and we got together to talk about that, and we've been together since. My probably good and oldest friend, John Turner, is also on the society and active in the newsletter group, and I want to thank John for his words that he put together for the nomination. And Steve was mentioned, Chief Brooks of the Lacy Fire Department. Steve, I want to thank you for your recommendation for the nomination. I very much appreciate it. Had the opportunity to work with Steve here in the last week and bringing back a 1967 Mack fire apparatus purchased by the union local of the Fire Department. We worked for about a year to try and make that happen. On Friday, it came back, and the Mack dealership out in Hawks Prairie is going to house that for a while and take care of renovating it, and it'll be used as a parade rig and whatever else they decide to use it for. Bothering me greatly that that rig is considered an antique, and it was brand new when I was a volunteer here at Lacy. And so, yeah, I want to thank my friend Larry Dibble for coming here. Larry retired from the Olympia Fire Department several years ago. Now himself runs a full-blown fire museum out in Little Rock. Jim Quackenbush, a guy that I worked with in Lakewood and in charge of our communications, Jim's here. Bob Bernauski, Mike Turner, where'd you guys go? Yeah, Bob, I worked with in Lakewood, and Mike, I worked with. Now, coincidentally, Mike, I mentioned Turner's Market, his grandfather, who my dad considered the father of the Lacy Fire Department, and Al Holman, as its patron saint, is here tonight. And I had a chance to work with him for a number of years on Lakewood. And I have to tell you, my first reaction when I found out that I got this was, was that, oh, my Lord, these guys have to set their sights higher. But then I realized, of course, this is about the story. But when I look at who has gotten this award, Thelma Jackson, major power hitter, Ken Ballsley himself, who anybody had even a moderate interest in Lacy history has read some of his stories about Lacy, Thurston County, and its environs. And gosh, Dr. William Eilers, first doctor in Lacy, active on the Lacy Historical Society, loved his patients, and they, him, was not only on the society and helping document Lacy history, but was a piece of Lacy history. And so I was, you know, then I had Shirley J. Jakes, of course. We see her work on the side of Safeway every time you drive by there. And so, yeah, me being included with that list is a bit intimidating, I have to admit. However, it's the story. And I, it was a fascinating story. I gave each member of the commission a copy of the book, and not as a payoff, I want you to understand. They can look at it however they want, but they can take a look at that. And the part of the story that was most favorite to me is I broke it into two segments. The department initially was known as the Lacy Lakes Fire Department. I called it the Elephants Fire Department because it was a service club in Lacy from the late 20s, early 30s into about 1952 that did what service clubs do. And they took on community projects all the way. I've never heard of a service club taking on the building of an entire fire department. I'm going to end here just shortly, but if I may, Mayor, there's just two short paragraphs that I think sums up what they did in getting this organization started and allowing it to develop into where it is today. And Steve, I know you've already heard this, so if you don't believe, you can. In just shy of 11 months, these good people put on benefit dances, dinners, carnivals, and baseball games, and donkey baseball games to boot. To garner funding, arranged housing for a truck and firemen, researched and purchased the truck, a resuscitator and associated equipment, set a schedule for providing 24-hour-a-day coverage, which for volunteer departments to do is really unique. Set up communications for responders, set the boundaries for a fire district, established administrative, operational, and social leadership, researched and executed the process to form the district, and then took it to a vote and prevailed. The greatest generation is mostly known for its dealing with the Great Depression and World War II. They should also be known for how they love their communities in the way these people did. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And after the grip and grin here, anyone who wants to congratulate Paul, we're going to be going next door to the executive boardroom.
Thank you, Paul.
Well, thank you. That was a lot of information, but I couldn't think of a better person to receive this award for everything that you've, all the stories that you have down. And of course, acknowledging Lacy Fire District III, who, if it wasn't for them, as you point out, I don't know if we'd be a city right now. And so, big thanks to Lacy Fire District III for everything you've done for this community and for the city of Lacy. We really appreciate it. I also want to say a real quick thanks. I'm a little biased because I love Lacy history. I come from an historic family. I live in historic Lacy, in a historic home, so it's sort of in my blood. But it was really, the Lacy Historic Society has been a big part of our community for a long time, and we were at a huge risk of losing the Historic Society. But Denise Keegan gave me a phone call and said, hey, the Historic Society is in trouble. We need to save it. And she got the ball rolling on that. And if it wasn't for Mayor John Halverson stepping up with a bunch of other people, we would have lost the Historic Society. And so I just want to say, Denise, thank you for your love of Lacy and making sure the Lacy Historic Society got started, that you're new with, that you're a big part of that, and making sure it continue. And Mayor Halverson, thank you for your stepping up and continuing to go in. So thank you very much. Okay, we got one, we're still on proclamations here, and we haven't gotten to the business, but we have one last proclamation, which is the National Police Week and Summer Events Update. Go ahead.
City of Lacy official proclamation. Whereas in 1962, President John F. Kennedy proclaimed May 15th as National Peace Officers' Memorial Day, and a joint resolution of Congress in 1962 established National Police Week, paying special recognition to those law enforcement officers who made the ultimate sacrifice in the line of duty for the safety and protection of others. And?
Whereas there are more than 800,000 law enforcement officers currently serving in communities across the United States, including the 82 dedicated officers and staff of the Lacy Police Department. And?
Whereas the city of Lacy recognizes the invaluable contributions of the Lacy Police Department to the safety and well-being of our community. The dedication and professionalism of our police force inspires trust, confidence, and a sense of security among our community members. And?
Whereas the Lacy Police Department actively engages with our community throughout, through various outreach programs, including community policing initiatives, outreach and resource teams, neighborhood watch programs, and youth mentorship programs to build trust, strengthen relationships, and enhance public safety. And?
Whereas the Lacy Police Department's commitment to de-escalation techniques, crisis intervention training, and community-oriented policing has resulted in a remarkable 99.9% non-use-of-force rate, demonstrating a dedication to resolving conflicts peacefully. And?
Whereas during National Police Week, we express our gratitude for officers of the Lacy Police Department and other law enforcement agencies for upholding justice, protecting our rights and freedoms, promoting safety for all our community members. And?
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, Mayor of the City of Lacy, on behalf of Lacy City Council, proclaim May 19th to May 18th as 2024 as National Police Week in the city of Lacy, and encourage all community members to join in recognizing our Lacy Police Department for their dedicated service to our community, to honor all fallen officers and their families. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on this date. Chief, you're going to come up, and along with Lindsay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this wonderful recognition. I can't tell how much it means to the department, to our members. Thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce Lindsay Palmer, our events coordinator. She's going to talk about some of the fine work she's been doing with her staff. She's going to talk about some of the fine work she's been doing with her staff. She's in charge, running our events. She just lets me and Kevin kind of hang around in the background. But she does some amazing workshops, coordinates all our social media, and she'll show an example of some of the work she's done as well.
Great.
Lindsay?
Hello. Thank you all for having us and for the proclamation for Police Week. I am Lindsay Palmer. I am a, sorry, police records specialist in our community resource unit with Sergeant Landwell and Officer McClurg. And my job duties, like he mentioned, consist of doing our social media and planning all of our events. And our unit does a lot of crime prevention and community policing, things like that. So we'll go out and talk to neighborhoods about how they can be safer, things like that. Probably most notorious for being Trip's mom. Trip is our two-year-old burn-a-doodle therapy dog that comes to work with me every day. And when I walk in a room with Trip, everybody says hi to Trip. And then after they've greeted him, they're like, oh, hey, Lindsay. So today, I'm just here to talk a little bit about the ways that we engage in our community, starting with our upcoming summer events. So first, we're going to talk about events that we, we do Coffee with a Cop regularly throughout the year. I try to schedule them with different businesses. Sometimes they reach out to me, sometimes I reach out to them. And they're more of an informal meet and greet kind of thing. We walk around, serve coffee, chat with patrons, and it allows for them to have a one-on-one interaction with our officers. And sometimes they're very surprised to pull up to a window and find a police officer standing there. But I think they really enjoy that interaction and it gives them a chance to get to know us, us to get to know them and answer any questions that they might have. Some of them are themed or we partner with other agencies. For instance, we do Coffee with a, or sorry, Costume with a Cop with Olympia PD in October. And we've had Game Night. And we've also had one where we had an all-female Coffee with a Cop with females from all ranks, from all agencies in Thurston County. And the next one will be on June 12th from 8:00 to 10:00 at Cutters Point in Hawksbury, if you'd like to come see us. And these are just some photos of Coffee with a Cop events that we've had in the past. We did do McDonald's on Slater County and Marvin Road this year. And this is from Costume with a Cop in October, where we see a lot of kids and do a lot of trunk-or-treating. And we've done them with Cafe Elite and Ebony and Ivory over in Woodland Square Loop. Another event that we do year-round, but we do see a lot more of them in the summertime. Come on. Thank you. We do a lot of school and daycare visits. They will usually reach out to me. Sometimes we go there, sometimes they come to us, depending on if they have a smaller group or not. And we bring stickers, we talk about safety, we make sure they know that if they need help, to call 911 and ask them questions about what would they do if a stranger came to the door or things like that. And they get to see a patrol car and sit in it. And they also get to pet Trip if they want to. So these are some photos of us doing that this year. You can see they like to sit in the police car. The officers will let them use the siren and talk over the intercom. And Trip also loves it because he gets a lot of attention, which he can never have enough of. And so we have one of those coming up in June as well. Our, our big summer event that we host is Cops Cars and Kids. It's a free event that we started doing annually in 2015. We did miss a few years for COVID. We have a car show and there are bounce houses. We give away free popcorn and snow cones. And the patrol cars are out so kids can sit in them. SWAT comes and shows them all their SWAT equipment. And we do a lot of demonstrations, handcuffing and defensive tactics and things like that. Home Depot comes and does a Home Depot workshop with the kids. And we also have a bunch of food trucks that come. And last year, we did rock painting as well for the first time, which was a big hit. And Blood Works Northwest also comes out with their Blood Mobile, just in case anybody is feeling generous. This year, we'll be hosting it at Cabela's on July 27th, just because our parking lot is a little bit chaotic right now with the construction. So that will be from 11:00 to 3:00. And we hope that you will join us at that because it is a lot of fun. These are some photos from past years. Most of them are from last year, actually. Lots of fun. I had to include this kid that made his own little Lacy PD patrol vehicle. And you can see in the bottom corner there, doing some defensive tactics where Officer McClurg got to be the lucky one to put the suit on when they were doing Taser demonstrations. And just kids really enjoying sitting in a cop car and doing the Home Depot workshop and things like that. Another event that we do annually is actually a nationwide event called National Night Out. It is always the first Tuesday in August. And we do it a little bit differently than other police departments because we, I will email all the HOAs and apartment complexes and ask them if they would like to participate in National Night Out. If they do, then we will set up a time that they're going to host an event. It can be really just like a meet and greet or sometimes they'll do an ice cream social or a barbecue or whatever. We will show up there and talk to them. And I work with our analyst. He runs all the crime stats for the neighborhoods that we go to. So that when we go out there, we are giving them crime stats that are relevant to them and crime prevention tips that are relevant to their community. Last year, we had 18 stops for National Night Out. So we split up into three groups and we spent 30 to 40 minutes about at each location. And it's not a ton of time, but it is enough for them to get their questions answered. And they also receive contact information for us or direction on whatever contact they might need in our department. So this year will be August 6th. So we'll be running around like crazy. And these are some photos from past events. Trip is usually with me, so wherever I go, he goes. He's just hanging out, watching there. And then I always bring, I send everybody with some LPD swag to each location in case any kids are there. And so that's always really fun. And I really encourage communities to sign up for National Night Out because we do provide a lot of really useful information that evening. So those are the events that we host in the summer. Other events that we attend are Fun Fair, which is coming up in a couple of weeks. We will have a booth there. And we'll also have a booth at the 3rd of July. And at the Barbecue Festival, July 13th. And we kind of wrap up our summer events, October 7th with Fun Fair, or sorry, with Children's Day in Hunter Park. And we also do a lot of HOA meetings, like Jubilee reached out to us recently and wants us to come out and do a safety talk with them. So our, our unit is going to go out and have a chat with them about ways they can make their community safer and also avoid being victims of scams, things like that. And Officer McClurg and Sergeant Landwell will often go out to businesses and do what we call SEPTED, which is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, which is giving them hint, like hints and tips of things like, is your lighting appropriate for where you're located? How are the shrubs around your entrance? Things like that. So where can you find out about our upcoming events? You can always follow us on our social media or you can check the city's website. Or you can also check the police website, they're all on there. And if you want to contact me about coordinating for an event, that is my information right there. And just shoot me an email and we will work together. And I also wanted to talk about engagement as far as our social media. I do the majority of our social media and that is another way that we engage with our community. And I did put out a video last week that I want to show you guys. But before I do that, does anybody have any questions about summer events?
Good job.
Thanks. And so then I guess we can watch the video. You're good.
So I have to give Lindsay a lot of credit. She really elevated our social media program to another level. She initiated Facebook Live ride-alongs. And they are extremely popular and watched throughout the state. They're a great recruiting tool for us as well as just letting people know how law enforcement is and what we see on a daily basis, along with a lot of documentation. Usually it's like, okay, now we've got to write reports and fade out, which is awesome. So she does a great job. Thank you for everything you do, Lindsay. Really fantastic. And how can you beat that hashtag? Don't steal stuff in Lacy.
That's great.
Great stuff. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you very much.
You guys can get, our proclamation people can go now if you, if you'd like. I just also, before we go on to our, our next item, that, that was a lot of proclamations, obviously. But I also just want to thank Councilmember Greenstein for recommending the National Police Week proclamation. So I appreciate you reaching out and that's, it was a great idea and it's very well deserved. So I appreciate that. Okay, let's go on to our next agenda item, which is under resolutions for Parks Projects Grant Application. Jen?
Great, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Deputy Mayor and the members of the council. Before you tonight is a recommendation to proceed with option one, as outlined in your, in the staff report in your packet, which would require two motions. The first would be to adopt resolution number 1146, authorizing city staff to apply for funding assistance managed by the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the William A. Bush Park Project. And the second would be to adopt resolution number 1147, authorizing city staff to apply for funding assistance for the Rainier Vista Park Project. And I'll give you a little bit more information about the projects and the match. The William A. Bush Project includes replacing the main playground, which is geared for ages five to 12, and adding pour-in-place surfacing for increased accessibility and safety. The Gateway Rotary Club is sponsoring the playground as a legacy project with a $110,000 contribution for the equipment. So the way it would work out is since 50% match is required for this park location, the city contribution would be $111,000 and the grant would be for $221,000 if successful with that grant. The Rainier Vista Park Project includes four new pickleball courts, which would be adjacent to the current courts, a softball field safety net, which would go between the current softball field and the pickleball courts, and then two outdoor ping pong tables. The Thurston County Pickleball Association has committed $25,000 to this, toward this project. And since 20% match is required at this particular location from RCO, the city portion would be just over $389,000, with RCO covering $500,000 if successful with that grant. Both of these projects qualify for the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, local parks category. You've often heard it referred to as WWRP. And the maximum grant award is up to 500,000 for each development project in this category. So happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I get a motion, please, for the first resolution, which is 1146?
So you, separate motion.
Yes, please.
I'd move to adopt resolution 1146, authorizing city staff to apply for funding assistance managed by the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the William A. Bush Park Project.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Councilmember Stedman, you look like you're frozen.
Yeah, it was aye.
Okay, then that motion unanimously carries. Can I get a motion for the next resolution, 1147?
I would move to adopt resolution number 1147, authorizing city staff to apply for funding assistance managed by the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office for the Rainier Vista Park Project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on this resolution? Seeing none? Is this, this is the one with the outdoor ping pong tables?
Yes, we, as a part of this project, that's one of the projects that we were hoping to get done before COVID. And it had been approved in the budget and haven't been able to circle back to that one. So we combined it with the pickleball project since we'd be at the same location.
I don't, I don't think I've seen an outdoor pickleball, I mean, a ping pong table. What is the lifespan of an outdoor ping pong table? Like, is it made of cement or something?
Oh, great question. They're pretty sturdy. Yeah, they're, they're typically, they're either steel or concrete, depending on which type you go with. But a long time.
When I read through it, that was the only question I could come up with was, what is an outdoor?
I definitely look forward to a ping pong, little ping pong tournament out there. That'd be fun. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 1147 for the Rainier Vista Park Project. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Great. And next up on our approved agenda, amended agenda, is ordinance. The ordinance 1659, the budget amendment for the public safety sales tax. Troy?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. It's certainly a fitting evening to be before you with this amendment. I wish I could say I planned it, but it was just a happy little accident that this follows the proclamation. But, you know, really this is an opportunity for us to secure more funding that will actually help us enhance the police service delivery model for us. So this is in reaction to the recent voter-approved 2/10 public safety tax, thanks to the leadership of Thurston County Commissioners as well as Sheriff, the sheriff's office. So I'm happy to say that we are going to enhance service. We, you know, you're going to remember last October, you passed a resolution identifying some priorities for these funds as well as making sure that we receive these funds in a separate account so we can be fully accountable to the public for these funds. So the amendment before you is, it really covers the second half of 2024. This is a tax that went effect- This is a tax that went effective April 1st, but we actually won't be receiving any of the proceeds until June. So this covers the period of June to December. So you are seeing a prorated budget for 2024. So within the amendment, it does include salary and benefits for five succession planning positions. As you know, these are positions that have been funded with reserves, so this will provide permanent funding for those five positions. The amendment also includes salary and benefits for four additional police officers. It includes a budget for professional services related to the mobile outreach team. These are services that are provided by Thurston Mason Behavior Health. The budget amendment also includes capital expenditures for four new police cars, as well as computer equipment for these positions. You also note that there is a reduction to the current expense fund budget. It's basically the transfer of some of these expenses that were in the general fund already. So we are moving those expenses to this new fund, as well as moving the reserve funds that we had identified to fund those services. So a slight reduction to the current expense fund. You do have the full details within the Exhibit A of the ordinance, but the staff recommendation would be to pass this ordinance, amending the 2024 budget that will help us enhance police services. Be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would move to adopt ordinance 1659, amending the 2024 budget, establishing a new fund in budgeted amounts for the City of Lacey, share of the Thurston County Public Safety Sales Tax.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Real quick, so after the capital outlays are paid for, completed, paid for, then what do we do after that in terms of, you know, we're continuing to collect those dollars and these four police vehicles are paid for and the laptops are paid for, then we just continue to bank those dollars in reserves? Or are we gonna go after something else after that? This is just, obviously, a budget for this year. We'll look at next year for another budget that will look at these funds and then we'll budget for next year based on those funds. So this is just for the remaining of this year. Next year, we will have another budget that will then look at those funds and decide what to do with it. But it will be in this separate fund that we'll be looking at. So we're not looking at, like, hey, after this is done? We'll discuss that in the next budget. Next budget. Sorry if I stole your thunder there.
Nope, that's great. You know, but maybe to add on to what the mayor said, in terms of our capital funding structure for vehicles and computers, we actually, we collect replacement dollars over the life of those assets. So that will likely be a proposal from staff that we fund that replacement. So in terms of police cars, we collect replacement dollars over a three-year period. So we basically pay one-third of the vehicle each year. Computers is very similar, but it might be a four-year replacement period. But it's a three- or four-year replacement period. So we're really spreading those replacement costs over a longer period of time.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Then seeing none, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 1659, the budget amendment for the public safety sales tax. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion unanimously carries. Thank you, Troy. So, oh, Councilmember Stedman?
Aye.
Okay, we got you. I saw your hand up. So next up is the mayor's report. Council's had this conversation a couple times about the opioid abatement council, which is something that actually Dave's gonna talk a little bit more about in the city manager's report. But a part of the MOU we signed for these dollars, it establishes this independent subcommittee for this opioid abatement council. And of course, each representative to that council needs a representative. And so I've had discussions with our city manager about this. And we've talked about appointing Councilmember Greenstein to this subcommittee. And so that would be my motion to appoint Councilmember Greenstein to the opioid abatement council independent subcommittee. Is there a second? There's a moved and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of my motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I think Stedman is frozen.
Aye.
There's the aye. Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We have appointed Councilmember Greenstein to the opioid abatement council independent subcommittee. And with that, we'll go to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. And the first item, keeping the theme with opioid abatement settlements, I'm gonna have our city attorney, Dave Schneider, give a brief in on the third settlement that's just coming into play that gives the option for council to opt into. So, Dave?
Thanks, Rick. Good evening, council members. Yeah, I'll be real brief. So September of 2022 was the first time that the city agreed or authorized the city manager to sign documents necessary to enter into an opioid distribution agreement. That was with the three distributors, if you recall. Then again, in March of 2023, there was another agreement with some of the manufacturers and the major pharmacies and dispensers, Walgreens and Walmart and CVS. And so the city is now, the city did enter into those agreements. And funds for both of those settlements have been coming in. The state of Washington did not, there was a national settlement also with manufacturer Johnson &amp; Johnson in 2022 that the state of Washington did not participate in. Rather, the Attorney General's Office instigated its own litigation. And that has recently reached a settlement agreement in January of this year, 2024. The amount, total amount would be $149 million, which is an increase from what was presented to the state two years ago. Of that amount, $123 million would be dedicated to the state and all the local jurisdictions within the state, 50/50. So the cities, the local jurisdictions would be dividing $61.67 million. And this distribution, it ties into the existing underlying allocation agreements that the city is already a party of. In fact, the opioid abatement committee, council committee, of which Councilmember Greenstein's gonna be a member of, would be looking at the other funds that are coming in in addition to funds from this distribution if the council does agree to participate in it. So what the action that would be necessary today in order for the City of Lacey to participate in this agreement would be authorizing the city manager to execute the settlement participation form. I believe that's the only document, but I am asking that the council authorize him to sign any and all documents relating to this settlement distribution. So if you had any questions, I'd be here to answer them, of course, but it's the same format as previously.
Go ahead. Just one, is there any downside? I mean, there's no, it's not like some better option, right?
No. Unless you direct your city attorney to instigate its own litigation.
Let's not do that.
Okay.
Can I get a motion?
I would move that we authorize the city manager to execute the settlement participation form and all documents necessary to participate in settlements with Johnson &amp; Johnson.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any other discussion? Councilmember Dunning?
Yeah, just real briefly, I remember when the council was discussing this last year. It's a sensitive subject for me. I have lost a family member because of opioids and no amount of money will ever bring her back. And I just, whenever we talk about this, I think that's something that needs to be spoken about and highlighted, is that nothing we do will fix the damage that has already been done. But I think, you know, Councilman Greenstein would be a great, you know, fiscal fighter for us on making sure that that money goes somewhere that actually will make a difference and it's not wasted. And I think we just need to remember why we're in this position in the first place and always have that at the forefront of this discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Dunning. You're absolutely right. This epidemic continues. It's not like the settlement has happened and somehow the issue's been even fixed. We're still dealing with this in our communities on a regular basis. And so, yeah, it's just, it's really sad. And I appreciate you, you know, pointing it into perspective. We're getting a few dollars that will hopefully start to make a little bit of a difference in our community for all the tragic lives that have been lost. And it doesn't matter your age or your race, any of that. Everyone's been affected by this epidemic across the board. So it's good to keep that in mind. This is something we are working together with all of our jurisdictions. And so as part of this council and this abatement council, and so I'm sure that Councilmember Greenstein will keep us apprised of the ideas that are gonna come back and keep us up to date on that. So we're, we can hear what's going on and obviously get our two cents before decisions are made on that as well. But with that, is there any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded to authorize city manager to execute the settlement participation form and all documents necessary to participate in the settlements with Johnson &amp; Johnson. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Next, we have another MOU to look at some regional coordination on analysis for housing displacement study and racial disparities tied to our comprehensive plan update. And I'm gonna ask our Community Economic Development Director, Vanessa Dobie, to provide some background on this MOU.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I get to be here on behalf of Ryan Andrews this evening. I hope he's enjoying his night with his son at district's baseball playoffs. So, exciting for him. But by way of background, House Bill 1112, which passed the state legislature in 2021, amended the Growth Management Act to require local jurisdictions to conduct a displacement and racially disparate impacts analysis to inform the development of our housing element of our comprehensive plan. So this MOU that advances a collaborative effort between Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Yelm to jointly complete this requirement on housing displacement and racially disparate impact analysis. The partnership will combine our resources and allow us to take a regional approach on this analysis and provide some cost sharing between the jurisdictions. The city's share of the cost is just over $31,000. And the funds will come from our Department of Commerce GMA Comprehensive Plan Update Grant that we received from them. The consultant that was selected based on a competitive process is BDS Planning and Urban Design. And staff is recommending that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Yelm regarding this analysis.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move that we approve the memorandum of understanding between the cities of Lacey, Olympia, Tomwater, and Yelm regarding a housing displacement and racially disparate impact analysis.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none? I guess I just have a question. So we'll enter this MOU, we'll work, the consultant is then gonna look within the different communities and propose a plan that then we will then adopt into our comprehensive plan?
Yeah, it will inform the outcome of our housing element of the comprehensive plan due to the policies that will advance before the council.
So at some point, this will be, come back before us with the results?
Absolutely.
Great. Any other discussion? Then it's been moved and seconded to approve this MOU between the cities of Lacey, Olympia, and Tomwater and Yelm. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Let me turn my mic on. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. And the last item I have on the city manager's report, as council will recall, about a month ago, at our Commission on Equity meeting, we had some public comment that was very shocking, surprising, and reprehensible. And in response to that, we wanted to come back to the council to talk a little bit about, you know, protocols, not only for city council and how we take public comment in this type of situation, being prepared for it, but also for our advisory bodies. Because there are a couple of different things we have to keep in mind, even though we may not agree or find some comments to be just that reprehensible. There are also our First Amendment rights and Open Public Meeting Act requirements that we want to make sure our advisory boards, as well as our council, are fully informed. So our Assistant City Manager, Shannon Kelly Fong, is gonna provide some overview and background to the council tonight and get some council feedback for preparation for looking at finalizing some updated protocols for taking public comment. So Shannon?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and council members. Like the city manager mentioned, I am here tonight to go over some background and some information. And then we have a draft public comment policy for review. And the purpose of tonight is really just to get some feedback and direction from the council. And pending that direction, we'll be back in front of this body with some more information at a later date. So just to provide some more information on what we're gonna go over, we'll talk about some background, some research that we've done here since the events that Rick just talked about. What are some potential options that other jurisdictions are doing and what some of the experts are recommending that cities do? And then we've provided, based on some of those recommendations, and then an internal review with our city clerk's office, as well as advisory board liaisons for all of our advisory boards, a draft public comment policy that we'd like to have a discussion on. So the recommendation, again, is just for feedback tonight, and that will lead to another discussion in the future. So as mentioned, at our March 25th, 2024 Commission on Equity meeting, we had a group of individuals that provided public comment remotely that made a series of discriminatory and hateful public comments. And I show all of these headlines here just to show the point that we are not alone in this occurrence happening across not only the Pacific Northwest, but Washington State and also the country. You can see we have, you know, cities like Federal Way, City of Snoqualmie, and the City of Ellensburg, just as a few examples. And these are just a few examples of these occurrences that are occurring. In response to these events, we did have the Commission on Equity, right after the incident occurred, provide a very strong response, talking about the reasons for why they exist and continuing to serve as an advisory board. The city also put out an anti-discrimination statement and hate speech condemnation the very next day. And I know the mayor also provided comments on the topic as well at a later council meeting. For background, when we're starting to look at public comment, I think it's really important to situate this with our federal law, as well as state law. And so I do want to review a couple of things. So the first thing in background, when we were looking and researching on this topic, was to start with the U.S. Constitution. And obviously, the First Amendment comes to mind with having no abridgement of freedom of speech being very important and central to this conversation. When we turn to hate speech, there is no legal definition of hate speech under U.S. law. So what we have grabbed here is from the American Library Association. And I won't read all of it, but you can see that they summarize it that generally, hate speech is any form of expression through which speakers intend to vilify, humiliate, and incite hatred against a group or a class of persons on the basis of race, religion, skin color, sexual identity, gender identity, ethnicity, disability, or national origin. Sorry. The American Library Association continues to say that in the United States, hate speech is protected under the First Amendment. However, hate speech can be criminalized, only though when it directly incites imminent criminal activity or consists of specific threats of violence targeted against a person or a group. To look more specifically statutorily here in Washington State, this is defined as a hate crime offense. And you can see the entire statute is provided here, which is RCW 9A 3680. But the important part down at the bottom that I've highlighted and bolded is that words alone do not constitute a hate crime offense unless the context or circumstances surrounding the words indicate that the words are a threat. Threatening words do not constitute a hate crime offense if it is apparent to the victim that the person does not have the ability to carry out the threat. So when we're looking at public comment, we have to keep in mind the U.S. Constitution and RCWs. And when we're looking at public comment, it is considered a limited public forum for free speech purposes, which means that governments can regulate the time, place, and manner of the speech, provided that the regulations are reasonable and content neutral. And when we're talking content neutral, we mean without regard to the substance or message of the expression. Pursuant to our Open Public Meetings Act, which is found in RCW 4230, there are some rules for how public bodies such as the council, as well as advisory boards, have to receive public comment. And specifically, public comment has to be received at all regular meetings of a governing body where final action is taken. I do think it is important to recognize that work sessions of this body of the council are also considered regular meetings pursuant to your own policies. And so you all can take final action at a work session, which is why we collect written public comment prior to our work sessions, in addition to providing at the regular meetings such as tonight, written public comment, in-person public comment and the option for remote public comment. Governing bodies also include the city council, but through extension of the city council, planning commissions, civil service commissions and any other policy and rulemaking bodies and committees that act on behalf of the governing body. So all of our advisory boards are currently taking public comment as part of their regular meetings prior to final actions. Public comment is not required at special meetings. And importantly, an agency can decide to accept public comment orally at a meeting or it can go written only. If a agency does accept in-person oral comments, if an individual who has a difficulty attending a meeting in person requests an opportunity to provide oral comment remotely, then the agency has to when it is feasible for the agency to do so. And that is a recent change in the Open Public Meetings Act that took effect about two years ago. So after researching kind of the broad parameters under which we have to operate here at the city, we also did some additional research by joining with some of the other local organizations here in Washington. Specifically, we attended a webinar which occurred a week after we actually got Zoom bombed. And it was put on by the Association of Washington Cities, and it talks specifically about this, and it was in partnership with MRSC. We also did a lot of research on MRSC articles for best tips and what could be some potential options that this body could consider. And we further researched a bunch of other resources that were available, like Jurassic Parliament. We convened a group of internal stakeholders and we went over a couple of options and received some feedback. And these internal stakeholders included all of our advisory board liaisons. And we went through these options and we have some recommendations and some items that we don't recommend moving forward for this body to consider. So the first option that we considered was eliminating all remote public comment. And we don't recommend doing this for accessibility purposes. The second option that we considered was limiting public comment to items on the agenda or also limiting it to items that are relevant to city business. I think importantly, there's some limitations to both of these options. With the first option, when you're limiting it to items on the agenda, this can really bring restraint for what people can bring forward to this body and make the body aware of. If something wasn't found on the agenda, they would be prohibited from speaking on it. With the second item, the relevancy to city business, this was determined that it could be something where it would place the presiding officer and governing body in a difficult position, because they would have to make a decision as to whether something was actually relevant or not relevant to city business. And city business can be fairly expansive. So for that reason, it was not recommended. Option three is to take steps to determine the identity of speakers who are commenting remotely, very similar to those who'd be commenting in person as well. And I think, just want to highlight that this would not be for anybody just attending in person or attending remotely, but only those individuals who wish to provide public comment. We do recommend moving forward with a couple of options within this option. And the first one is to continue the current practice of pre-registration for two hours in advance for remote public comment. This is something that the city council has practiced for several years now. However, advisory boards have not had a similar practice and have allowed individuals to speak remotely in the moment. The second item, we also recommend...
Is that the only change then? And this, is that currently the city council does this, but what we're doing is a recommendation to extend that to our advisory boards and civil service boards as well? Is that the only change?
That is not the only change. There are a few other options too that I want to highlight.
On that, on this current option though?
Yes, on item one under this current option, that would be the only change. This is a practice that the city council has done. The only change would be extending it to the rest of our advisory boards.
Okay. My question is, is what if someone doesn't want to reveal who they are?
Sure.
Do they still have the option? Or do you say, sorry, if you don't tell us who you are, we're not going to it? And I'm also sort of wondering what that really does, because we don't, we have no way to verify who they say they are. So what's, what's, what's the purpose of this? I understand preregistering, that makes a lot of sense. But the identification part, I don't, I'm a hundred percent sure what, how that helps us in this circumstance.
Sure, I think it's a, it's a, it's a really good question. And it is something that we also ask, you know, individuals who sign in, right? So just providing a name upfront right now, if you were to provide in-person public comment, you would provide your, your name on the sign-in sheet. And it's something too, if you were to preregister, you'd also provide your name. What we're trying to do with asking things of like city of residence or connection with the city would be to establish, okay, you know, when we're prepping, whether it's our council or our advisory boards, that this person obviously has a legitimate connection with the city. That doesn't mean that we would not allow them to provide public comment, but it could just better prepare potentially some of our advisory board members and council members as well. To your point, Mr. Mayor, somebody could provide a name that was incorrect. They could make up where they lived and they could make up what they were saying. And we're not going to go and vet it, but it would just provide a little bit more information for the body receiving it prior to the comments, regardless of what those comments would turn out to be.
Okay. Thank you.
So that was our, our second recommendation under this was to provide that information. And that is actually, when we get a little bit later on in the presentation, something that is encouraged to do as part of our current policy right now. One of the things I did want to highlight is that we did take this presentation to the Commission on Equity at their last meeting, which was actually just yesterday, due to the fact that we had to postpone their meeting a week. And then we also received some feedback just recently, right before this meeting, from the Lacey Youth Council as well. And I do want to highlight that there was a very robust discussion at both groups about whether or not having the two-hour preregistration would create potential barriers to participating in public comment. And so there was certainly a conversation on both sides as to seeing the, the use and how it could deter individuals from Zoom bombing in the future. And there were also comments of recognizing that when we want to hear from everybody in the community, requiring them to sign up two hours in advance could be an impediment.
Councilmember Greenstein?
Yeah, I, I have some issue with that as well, with the two hours. Just how does the public know they need to sign up two hours in advance? You know what I mean? I just don't, I don't see any way to publicize that well. That, that does concern me.
Yep, that is, that is a great question. And that's also one of the things too, that can be very confusing for members of the public right now. So if you try to provide public comment remotely, you know, for the city council, you do have that two-hour preregistration. It is at the discretion currently per policy for the presiding officer to ask if anybody else wants to provide remote comment. But for the rest... Correct. For the rest of our advisory boards though, that's, you know, currently something that's only been in practice for a month, based on a response to this incident. So it could just be confusing having different rules across different bodies. So I do want to recognize that. As far as trying to get the information out, the best way that we currently have contemplated it is number one, we can add some additional information on our agendas, allowing, you know, individuals to know that that is a requirement. We do have information listed on all of our city council page saying that you have to preregister two hours in advance. We provide, we could provide that information very similarly across all of our advisory boards and then do a social media push to try to get that information out as well. When you do click on the hyperlink for the meeting, we could also add some additional information there too, saying that there is that two-hour requirement. I also want to make a note that there is also a time requirement for written public comment as well. And part of that is so that we have the administrative time to pull that information and get that information to the individuals who need to see it, read it and review it prior to the meeting. So when we're talking about preregistration times, if we do want to require some sort of timeframe, we do need to take into account some administrative time for us to be able to get that information to the respective party and also for individuals to be able to process that information.
Councilmember Vasquez?
And that was partly what I was going to say, is that for written public comment, we already have a deadline that is posted that people need to be aware of, where you have to submit your written comments by 4:00 PM to be received by the city council because of the administrative process. So it's not something that we've never done before, is setting that sort of deadline for the administrative piece. But there's also, I know that coming in person isn't accessible for everyone, but there is no timeline associated with providing public comment if you're able to physically attend the meeting, because you could just show up 10 minutes after the meeting starts maybe, and there's still an opportunity to provide public comment on things that are on the agenda or not. So again, it's not a perfectly accessible option, because some people just can't be here, they have childcare issues or transportation issues. But there is that option of being here in person with no deadline.
And I think council member too, just to add on to that, I think there's some options the city could explore too. And I've seen other jurisdictions do it for ways to capture public comment. We haven't really looked at any type of video capturing system, but that could also be a way to alleviate that issue if somebody wants to provide a public comment in real time. But that's something that we would have to do a lot more research on before we're ready to come back to this body with any type of recommendation.
I think that's worth looking into though, and maybe reporting back if there is a, a video option where you can, I got you Nick. If you can prerecord a something and let us know that way. I think the more options out there, the better. I know there's some research and some staff time, but we have the tech, if we have the technology to be able to do it, we might as well try to take advantage of that technology. Councilmember Dunning?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say, I have a slightly different idea. I was gonna wait, but kind of we're going into it now. So a huge, huge believer on freedom of speech. And so one thing that I think about when people come to give public comment in, you know, at our council meetings, they have to stand up and, you know, speak in front of everyone and say what they have to say. And if that's positive, neutral or crazy, then they, they get to do that. They, they, you know, show their face. And I think the same type of requirement with a Zoom is completely reasonable is, is being able to, you know, just turn your camera off and say what you want versus actually having to have your camera on and, you know, then actually show yourself, I think, is a completely reasonable expectation. And I think that goes under, under rules of free speech, because if you want to go to a telephone pole and put up a flyer, well, we can come take that flyer down. But if you want to go stand next to a telephone pole and talk for as long as you want, that is your right to do. So I think, you know, kind of going back on the point of, anybody can say there's somebody else, anybody can, you know, put a different address, put a different name. That really doesn't identify them. But for someone to actually show their face and say those things that were said, I think, is a much bigger barrier to those, to those scenarios. And I, I think that's a completely reasonable expectation and the timeframe. And if they don't want to show their face, well, they can do a written, a written comment. I think, I don't see why that would be too much asked for anyone, especially in the technological age that we're in now.
Where, where's the council on this? I know, I know, I get exactly where Councilmember Dunning is coming from. And it, it seems like sometimes people hide behind not having to show their face and say horrible nasty things, you know, which is their right. But it's a little bit different if they actually have to show their face like they're here in person. Now, some cases, maybe they don't have the technology to turn their, their camera on. But is there a, something that we can say that we recommend that you show, you know, you turn your camera on if it's available?
I do just want to jump in and provide a little bit more detail too, that we don't recommend actually bringing people over to turn on their cameras, because as part of the process for that, we have to promote them to a panelist from attendees. And then we'd have to de-promote them, to remove them. And when we do that, we run the risk of when we have people who are allowed to turn on their cameras, of another type of security issue of a different type of Zoom bombing with images.
Hmm. I, I, I understand that. I do understand that. But shouldn't those people follow under the same guidelines if they're doing something inappropriate to be able to turn, turn it off? I mean, I guess that's the one thing that we haven't got to yet, and I'm, wait, let's see if we get to, is, is what is the policy when someone is saying something offensive? What is our policy when we do something like that? And what, what's considered offensive? Right? I mean, so we haven't quite, we, we had a discussion on what's not a hate crime and what's, how you can prosecute, so on and so forth. And I, that's okay. But we haven't acknowledged, what do we do when someone is saying something that's, we think is offensive, that so we have to cut them, cut that, that speech off?
We, we don't...
I don't think that's possible.
We can't cut them off.
Councilmembers, I would just go back to us being content neutral, right? And that hate speech is a protected First Amendment right. And so part of some of the things we want to go over is have some limitations maybe for time that currently would provide some parameters in which they could be cut off after a certain amount of time.
So, okay, well, this is a good discussion, because you're saying that during public comment, they can basically say whatever they want for three minutes and we, we can't...
As long as it's not a threat.
Right, I mean, what Shannon's going through right now is, is some of the boundaries that the council can put on public comment. But if public comment is allowed, and whether it's the council or somebody in the audience or anybody finds it offensive, there's very little at that point that can be done unless it's disrupting the meeting, unless it's inciting violence. Just because it's offensive doesn't, doesn't mean they can't say it. They, they can say it.
They, they can say it. Is there, so at what point do we have, can they just say, no matter, anything they say? What, what?
Let me put it this way. The, the, the meeting that stemmed this conversation, most of what was said couldn't be interrupted.
They just had to let it speak for three minutes and then?
Correct.
Now, what about the rule that was discussed? I don't know, are you guys able to hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
What about the rules that was discussed about limiting comment towards topics? Is that something, I don't like that necessarily for council meetings, but for committees? Can you have a different rule for committees than you do for the actual council meeting?
So if I could, to respond to that question, I think to go back to the incidents that did occur on the Commission on Equity meeting, a lot of those comments started off as like they would be connected to work that the Commission on Equity would be involved in, and then turned and continued into, you know, the hateful comments that they made. And so it's really hard to make that line and puts the presiding officer and the governing body potentially in a very precarious state to make that determination.
Okay.
So I got a few more items on here, and I think we're getting to a lot of the discussion that I do want to get to.
Okay.
So maybe if I just continue just to provide all of the information and then we can continue this conversation, so you have a full understanding of all of the options that we reviewed and would like to get some additional feedback on. So one of the things that we just went over, very closely connected to Councilmember Dunning's point about the cameras, is that we want to continue to recommend that we have some updated Zoom protocols in that we keep people in the attendees and we don't promote them to panelists for the reasons I just specified, with the possibilities of visual Zoom bombing and just the timing it takes to move somebody from attendee to panelist and then back from panelist to attendees. What we're recommending for all of our liaisons right now for advisory boards is to use the permission to talk, so where you can turn on the allow to talk. And then once the person has provided their public comment or has exceeded the time limits that may be established, they could be muted. And that would be through a function of removing permission to talk. And so we wouldn't remove anybody from the meeting. They could still listen and hear all of the discussion after that, but they would no longer be able to turn on their mic moving forward.
Just a quick question on that. When you give permission, so you can give permission to speak to that individual, you're not giving it to everyone in, in the room?
Correct, yep. So you would give it to an individual and then you would restrict that individual as well.
And wasn't that part of the issue is that we didn't have that? So at the end of three minutes, we hit mute and then just unmute themselves and they kept on talking?
So yeah, part of the issue was just not using this tool effectively. And so yes, the individuals unmuted themselves, and that's when they became a disruption to the meeting, when they were no longer following the policies and procedures for public comment, but talking over our presiding officer and the Commission on Equity.
Okay. So if, if they, if they start using...
So if, if they, if they start using, you know, like hateful speech or whatever, we, and, and they're within their three minutes of time, then, then, and what if we do cut them off? Then what?
That could put the city at risk for violations of the First Amendment right. And I would turn over to Dave for any additional comments.
Is that including the profanity?
No, profanity is protected. There's, there's very little, there's a lot of speech that would be shocking to the conscience that is allowed under the First Amendment. And if a governing body is going to take away a person's right to exercise free speech, they're now violating the First Amendment of the Constitution. And, you know, goes without saying that that's, that's a no-no. So we don't want to do that. And so again, what Shannon's proposing or presenting is just kind of the, the guidelines that the council can place on public comment. Once, once public comment's allowed and once the rules are presented and the person's speaking, they get to speak.
So the one difference is if, if it's threatening, right? But obviously, even this is words alone did not constitute a hate crime unless it's, the context or circumstances surrounding the words indicate the words are a threat. But threatening words do not constitute a hate crime offense if it's apparent to the victim that the person does not have the ability to carry out the threat. How in the world do we know if a person has the ability to carry out the threat?
It's very difficult. And, and what, what Shannon's gonna get to, I think, coming up in her presentation is gonna be, you know, what, what's important here is that council's aware of what it can do and what the public has a right to do. And so that by being well-educated in that, the council can react to, in real time and just, and just know that this is allowed, or if it's not, or if it is hate speech and if it is disruptive, have a, have a process by which council's versed in that can be followed to minimize the disruption and the, and the speech.
Okay. Go ahead, Jen.
So moving on to another option, one thing we could consider doing is creating a universal time for public comment and using a timer to keep public comments to those allotted times. So currently, when we look across the council and various advisory boards, there are some advisory boards that have rules. There's council that has a kind of recommended encourage time, but what could be established is a very concrete time. And then once any individual goes over that time, they could be cut off. We do have the ability here in the council chambers to mute that mic up front here for in-person comments. And then also online, like I just walked through with that tool, we can also restrict individuals' ability to speak. So we would recommend starting the adoption of a timer and keeping to that timer.
So on, on that, Jen, and if we went to, which we normally do, we always tell people to try to keep within three minutes, right? If we actually made that a rule, a hard, fast rule, so even if it wasn't something that we needed, wanted to cut off, we would have to cut everyone off at that three minutes, correct?
So part of the policy that we're presenting is that there could be an option, possibly, and how it's written right now is it's at the discretion of the presiding officer to extend it, but we'd like to take a look at that and look at some, some, some issues that could be raised by it when you're starting to extend one individual's right to speak over another individual's right to speak.
I really feel like, I'm not sure where the council's at on this. I don't want to be the one making decision, should they continue to speak or they shouldn't continue to speak. I think we have to say it's three minutes and I'm sorry, your time will be cut off.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise it feels like a risk to not being content neutral if we're saying, well, we like what you're saying, so you get to keep talking, but we're gonna cut somebody else off.
If I don't like what they're saying, yeah. I mean, that's just not, I don't, I don't want to be in that position, so I'm just sort of putting it out there.
If, if we do that, I would just have an actual timer that they can see so it cues them in how much time they have left.
Maybe our lawyer, David, could recognize a threat because I'm, I'm sure if we recognize it, he could recognize it. And at that point, if then we felt like he could, someone could carry it out, they could just turn them off.
Well, the threat's a different, I think, conversation. The, the timing piece, I think, do we all agree that we should have a three-minute timer, let them people know and, and then stick to three minutes?
And so council, we will go over the draft policy too, but I do hear that direction loud and clear, and that'll cover one of those boxes as we go through it. Another thing we discussed is creating standardized rules for public comment across the council and advisory boards. So individuals on advisory boards and the council know exactly what the rules are, and then also members of the public, regardless of what body they go to, know exactly what the rules are as well. This would require us taking a look at some of the various policies that I just mentioned. So specifically for the council, we'd have to review Council Policies and Procedure Manual 7.07 Order of Business. And as you can see, Commission on Equity and the Parks Board have various rules as well. So we'd have to revisit those rules and then establish rules for our other advisory boards. So what's in the council policy manual currently? What I would like to call polite and permissive, but not necessarily standardized or directive language. So you can see there's language such as encourage to give their name and address for the record, asked to limit their address to three speaks, may limit, may interrupt public comment that continues too long or relates negatively to others, or is otherwise inappropriate, which as we've reviewed is problematic based on the Constitution. So what's in the, the draft policy? It defines how a body could accept public comment, what are some of the rules, including some prohibited items, and then it also refines some rules for public hearings. In addition to that, what we also recognized is there is what can be done pursuant to the Constitution and free speech. And then there's also things that you can do as the presiding officer and the body after comments are made. So it provides a comment, it provides a draft script for presiding officers to set up public comment with all of the rules, based on what would be determined as the final rules. And then also, if there were hate comments that were made, it also allows for an opportunity for public comment members after, you know, public comment has closed to address it, just like the Commission on Equity did at the end of the Commission on Equity meeting. It also provides notes for public comments for staff members as well as bodies, including if there were occurrences of disruptions and what those bodies could do during those incidences. So discussion items, and we'll go over these kind of one by one, and we've already talked about several of them, so we don't need to potentially spend a lot of time on all of them. But one would be to create a comprehensive public comment policy, two, to use sign-in sheets, both remotely and in person, to try to verify more information, to limit the individual duration for public comments, and also group public comments. And then also to allow for potential extensions of public comment periods, and I'll get to what that means here in just a second, and the total duration of public comment periods. So included in your packet tonight is this draft, and I have highlighted a couple of areas that we wanted to discuss with this body and get some direction, which again, we've already received some direction. The first one is to standardize this and move away from the permissive language and to have more directive. So instead of encouraging to move to language such as shall, so shall use sign-in sheets and pre-registration forms. The other item we highlighted up here is may call for additional speakers present in person. I do want to recognize that if we only allow for remote public comment with a two-hour in advance, that is a kind of a different setup for individuals here who are in person. And so there could be some conversation about limiting that to, to only individuals who have signed up on the sign-in sheet and providing ample information up front around on the door that you need to sign in to provide public comment, just like we would do with our remote public commenters.
Hmm. I have a quick question.
You're looking for direction specifically on that?
Yep, I'm pausing here, but I see a couple of questions too.
Go ahead.
Well, my, my question goes back a couple slides, but you said that if, if, if they have their camera on, then they're promoted as a panelist?
So they can turn their camera on if they are a panelist. If they are only an attendee, they cannot turn a camera on.
Okay, so if they're an attendee, at no time do they have a camera on. We wouldn't be able to identify who is actually sitting at a terminal?
You wouldn't be able to see who was sitting at a terminal, but the idea would be that they would self-identify who they were, their city of residence, their connection to the city, and potentially their purpose for public comment.
And so, so Zoom doesn't have the technology at all to, to initially have a camera on and then turn it off to be an attendee? Or I'm, I'm wondering if there's, there's, if there's, if, if any of the technology would allow for us to visually see that person prior to them becoming an attendee or visually see that person in some capacity before they are actually, you know, moved into the room where they can actually speak. I'm trying to, trying to figure out how can we, I, I, as a panelist, we, you would, you would have a camera on, we'd be able to see you, right? As an attendee, we can't. And I'm wondering if, if there's some way that, that we can see an attendee at all?
Deputy Mayor, at this point, there is no opportunity for that in Zoom. So as a attendee, we can't see who's on the other line. We could only have them turn their camera on if we promote them to a panelist.
But we, we, we could have anyone who's, wants to do a Zoom comment, you know, be ready by public comment time, you could bring them all on as a panelist and then mute them, and you have control of the mute. And then you can call them one at a time and unmute and mute. And so the difference is, is we'd see all of the people who are doing public comment for the duration of the public comment period. There's no difference between that and seeing people in your audience waiting for a public comment.
Here, I do, I do want to jump in that, on the platform that we use Zoom right now. If you are a panelist, you have control of your microphone and your camera. So we could not mute and unmute individuals. We could mute and unmute them, but they could easily unmute themselves and continue conversation.
Is it, that's just a function of our Zoom?
That is the function of, that is a function of Zoom.
Well, be...
But if, if they violate a rule that we associate with, hey, you're, you know, you have to wait until you're called on, you have, you can't, if they violate a rule and then then they are kicked off the Zoom, I don't see why that is, anyway, these are the rules for public comment. You cannot, you know, speak until it's your time to speak, you can't, you know, if your camera, you have to have your camera on. If you have something that's seen on your camera, again, you're gonna get booted off. I, I think the time and effort that it takes to do that is much more important than, than all the other things that we're trying to, to do to try to accomplish the same thing.
I'm just, I'm just a little curious because I, I know I've been on Zoom where I've, as the chair, I'm in control of the mute, and they can't unmute me. When I put them on mute, they, they can't unmute.
Right, and you can see them all.
You can see them all. And so I just, we must have a different program.
I was actually gonna talk about something else, but I wanted to say I'm very much in favor of us proceeding with the no-video rule for remote people who are sharing public comments.
Okay.
I don't know what level of visible obscenity would constitute hate speech, but I, I just don't want us to go down that road where we let people turn their cameras on and then they blast us with something visually offensive. I think that's the risk that we're seeking to avoid. I don't think that being able to see somebody's face while they're spewing vitriol outweighs the risk to like getting blasted with pornography, for instance, which has happened to many public meetings around the country. Like, I work for the state, there's been some things. But the other thing I wanted to mention, I'm, I'm just, I wanted to say I'm very much in favor of us continuing to not allow video for public commenters remotely. But I just wanted to mention, I had been initially sort of skeptical about having folks sign in on a sign-in sheet because I know that you cannot limit attendance at public meetings. But there's a difference between limiting attendance and setting up criteria for people to publicly testify. So that was, at first I was like, are we allowed to have people sign in or to require, change the language in the policy to shall instead of it is recommended that? And yes, we are. We can set criteria when someone wants to participate in the meeting. It's different than just letting people attend the meeting. So I'm very supportive of that, changing that to shall.
Okay.
If we did that, change it to shall, would that then eliminate the ability for Andy to ask, is there anybody else in the audience who wants to make a comment?
Yes.
And that's the second highlighted section that we wanted to get some clarity and direction on. So we would recommend, if we're being consistent with the remote participants, to look into that option of you have a sign-in sheet. We could certainly clarify, you know, upfront as you walk in that you would need to sign in and provide some more information. So as written, it says may call for additional speakers in person, but that was one of the things that we wanted to have a discussion with this body about.
We could put a sign on the door even that says, if you wish to address the council, be sure to sign in or whatever.
Correct.
What's the thoughts about that? Are we saying that anyone who's wishing to speak, they need to sign up ahead of time and we're not gonna allow anyone spur of the moment? I'm, that means I won't be asking, is there anyone else wishing to address this council?
I mean, I, I do think that like you can sign in on the sign-in sheet right up until the minute that the meeting starts. And so if we, if we lead with, if you're interested in addressing the council, please do sign in on the sign-in sheet and we'll call on you in, in the order that you're signed up.
Councilmember?
I would, I mean, I like the fact that we ask if there's anyone else because it's happened many times, there's someone didn't sign in but did want to speak. I prefer that, but for consistency, if we're gonna require a two-hour sign-in for online, I think we should be consistent across all formats and all meetings. So I can, you know, persuade it pretty easily to require the sign-in, I guess.
Could we just require them, if they're gonna, if you ask, oh, they forgot to sign in, could you just have them say, okay, please, you know, go sign in, you know, real quick and then you can make your, make your comment?
Well, I think we have to be, to, to councilmember Greenstein's point, we've been pretty lackadaisical on this and, which has been...
Intentional.
Intentionally, like, I want people to be able to give public comment, but if we're, this is the problem when you have to regulate to your, the worst possible outcome, right? This is the, the things that you always run into in, in local government and, and our former government and with, even though, you know, the freedom of speech is like, you have to regulate to what's, could worst possibly happen. And unfortunately, I think in this circumstances, if we're gonna try to put some limitations on it, we have to be uniformed in it. Otherwise, we're, we're treating people differently, and that's one thing we shouldn't do here.
I think standardizing our practices around this is protective for the volunteers that serve on our committees, right? Because we, we're responsible to listen to what the citizens of Lacey want to say to us, but we have a lot of people on our volunteer boards and commissions that I think this guidance will be really helpful for.
Do you, do you need an answer on this tonight, or is this something that we could work session a little bit? Because it, it seems like we have a lot of discussion on this and, and we're...
Well, I know that you have to come back for a recommendation. What, what I would say at this point is, I think what I'm hearing from the councils that we're gonna have, let's try to do a standardized, let's be standard across the board, but once this comes before the council, if you've, at that point, if you've thought on this or the rest of the council's thought on it, and we want to change it at that point, then I, that we're more than welcome to do that. But I think we should be presenting an idea of how we, how we go forward on this. And I think what I'm hearing from the majority of the councils is that we should have it standardized.
My only question is, do we have to have the same standardized policy for council meetings as we do for all the other types of meetings? Council meetings, really, I believe anything should go under the, you know, freedom of speech, but the other meetings, do we have to have the exact same rules?
So Commissioner Dunning, to, to answer your question, it would, it would, yes, is, we would like to standardize the rules so that way there's consistency, but the freedom of speech would still apply to our advisory boards whenever they're making a final decision or action. And so if they're providing options for public comment, it would be a limited public forum just like the council.
Okay. And I'm fine with that.
Okay. So my, my only fear is that, you know, if for some reason you're unable to, you know, come and sign up by, before four o'clock, you know, and you had something to say to us?
Well, we're saying, yeah, it's...
Well, if we standardize.
Yeah. I see where you're coming from, but I think what we're saying is if you're here, you need to sign up, and we're not gonna add any after the fact. We're gonna standardize that, and we're gonna continue the standardization of pre-registration. What I'm hearing from the council.
We also publicize that while the rules may preclude you from speaking because you didn't sign up or meet the time thing, that they certainly have the, the ability to email us with their comments and...
They always have the ability to email us.
Yeah, but just, I think they need to hear that. Yeah, but just, I think they need to hear that. This is a, a way of commenting that.
And councilmembers, that's certainly information that we could provide in every place that we provide information on how to sign up for public comment. That written public comment is always available. I do want to just also highlight though, that written public comment does have a cutoff period as well. And that anything that comes after that cutoff period goes to the next meeting. So it's not that it doesn't go anywhere. It's just that there is also a cutoff period.
It still gets entered into the record just at the following meeting. So I mean, they're still getting their public comment, just not at that particular meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
So a couple more items, maybe to get some direction. I think I've got some good direction here to bring back another draft. So Deputy Mayor, to answer your question. So we're going to take the information and feedback that we're here tonight and put together another draft for the council to consider at a later date. So the next item would be to have our public commenters provide their name, city of residence, or connection to the city and topic or subject matter of their comments. And I think, as pointed out earlier, we're not going to necessarily check every individual. So you could potentially have an individual who would provide false information and we would not know it was false information.
Yeah. Yes. I think, I mean, I, I'm not sure what this does, but I think it's nice to have as a policy, I guess. Yeah, I don't think accomplished as much, but.
The other items would be to limit public comment for individuals to three minutes and to have that timer used effectively in meetings moving forward. And to have individuals cut their comments off after the three minute period.
Yes. Yes, council? Nick, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
For groups, we were looking at six minutes. So this would allow individuals who are on, together on an item to come and present as, as one whole. So for example, if you had 10 members of the public who were working as part on behalf of a, let's say, an organization to provide public comment, rather than each of them having three minutes, they would be provided a total time as a group together as six minutes. Currently, what's written in the council policy is 10 minutes.
Hmm.
I can't think of a time when we've.
Limited that.
I can't think of a time when we've had a group.
We had the.
Speaking of public comment. Now, if each, they may, we've had many times where they were speaking on the same topic. But they didn't consider themselves a group necessarily. So each of them was able to speak for three minutes.
Yeah. How do, how do you consider what's a group and what is individuals speaking on the same topic?
I think that would be for the individuals to self-identify. We're not going to necessarily ask them, are you part of this group? Are you part of that group? But let's say, for example, an organization did want to come and provide some public comment on a particular topic and there were five of them, but they really only wanted one speaker. They could opt to have the six minutes rather than the three minutes as a group.
Nominate one articulate person to use all six minutes to the benefit of the organization. But I think the other piece that we're talking about is covered on number five, which is if a bunch of people come and they want to talk about the same thing, then we can say, we're going to talk about, we'll allow X number of minutes for this topic.
Yeah. And I.
But what, what is to say that someone just says they're, the person for whatever organization they say and they, they're a representative and they get six minutes? What's, how do you determine that?
Yeah, how do you determine who's in the group?
I think that is a, an excellent question. And, you know, at the end of the day, again, we don't have a very limited capacity to vet individuals providing public comment. And so if that is a concern of the council, we could certainly remove that and just have individuals for three minutes.
I prefer that.
I'm with you on that.
I, I prefer individuals for three minutes and, and, and go with a topic, have a total of, you know, same topic, you know, have four individuals. The only problem is, is like, at, at what point do you stop? I mean, save 100 people. Do we, I know, like Olympia council who deals with this on a regular basis, they do have a, they could speak for a certain time period for a public comment.
So that's number six on the list of things that we'd like to potentially include as part of the draft is to have a, a period of time allotted for public comment specifically. And then if there were additional commenters who still wanted to provide public comment after this period of time, either the public comment would be effectively over and they could write written comment or the body could decide at the consent of the body to extend the allotted time for public comment or even potentially move public comment to a later time in the agenda to allow for business items to proceed and then to return to public comment.
I think a 30 minute rule is, is appropriate.
Councilmember.
I, I have real problems with both five and six. I mean, we're a public body, right? We represent the people of Lacey. And if more than, you know, six people want to speak, whatever the number winds up being on a topic, I, I'm not comfortable with us determining that what you're going to say is what has already been said. We don't know what that person's going to say until they get up there and speak. So I'm not comfortable with limiting the number of people or even the, the amount of allotted time. I mean, again, if it started to be a problem, we could always look at it again. But in my 13 years on this council, that's never become an issue, right? Where we've had so many people here that it over, that it, you know, although actually we have, we've had a couple of issues where we did have 70, 80 people come and we allowed them all to speak.
I just offered that.
I'll rephrase mine. I, I personally am comfortable letting as many people want to speak as possible. If we are going to put a time limit on it, I am also comfortable with that. I'm comfortable going either way. If the whole council wants to let us make people talk, I am on board with that as well.
I was just going to offer that these are limitations that the council has the ability to put in place. And for the most part, having a 30 minute time limit is not going to be an issue because it's very exceedingly rare that public comment would ever go beyond that. And, but it, it's a tool that the council would be able to pull out if it gets out of control. I think with the consent of the body, if we want to consent for it to be over a half hour, that's, I think, I think that's reasonable. And I don't see a time where we wouldn't consent to it. But there, there may be an issue where we're hearing the same thing over and over and over. I mean, I don't know, and we want to limit it 30 minutes and for sake of business, so.
Well, I'm more comfortable with that.
Yeah.
Limiting it to 30 minutes on end for limiting the number.
Yeah.
So I mean, if we were going to do that, because like you said, the consent of the body, we can always extend the 30 minutes.
Yeah. The, I mean, that will allow 10 people, but. The issue with that, though, if you don't have both, is that perhaps 30 minutes are up and there's three people at the end that are wanting to comment on a completely different topic. And the first topic consumes the entire 30 minutes. Right. So that's, they kind of are harmonized.
So if we took part of the language that's highlighted in number five with the consent of the body, could we shift it down to number six so that we could extend the time? Just on number six with consent of the body. So public comment is typically limited to 30 minutes, but by consent of the body, we could extend.
And Councilmember Vasco's example, I was going to point out that that was actually the recommendation from the Commission on Equity last night to add that language as well, to have very similar to reading what number was five.
Okay. I, I would agree with that as well, with a consent of the body. Yeah? Okay. Good job, Commission on Equity.
One more question. I know at some of those meetings where we did have like huge amounts of speakers, you several times during the meeting would say, if your comments are identical to something that's already been said, please consider, you know, not commenting or limiting yours to a lesser amount of time.
And I think, I think that.
That would fly, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And, and then we, with the consent of the body, we can have it go forward. But, and, and this issue, I think that makes a lot of sense because we're trying to get, make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak on as many topics as possible. And if 50 people want to speak on one topic, then we will never listen to the people who want to speak on a different topic. So I think this gives us the flexibility to be able to do that.
So the next recommendation for the policy is to align our public hearings very closely to everything we went over with public comment. And so I'm not going to go every, through every single detail. I think we've got some good direction on that, if that's something that the council would like us to move forward with.
The public hearings, so the chair of the, you know, the planning commission needs to follow the same rules. I, I agree. Yeah.
Well, the only question I have on that is, in a public hearing, I could see where it might be a legitimate reason that someone would talk for more than three minutes at a public hearing. I mean.
Or I think, I think that should be left up to the presiding officer of the, of the planning commission to sort of sort some of that stuff out too. If we give them the same guidelines that we're following, then I think they should be able to.
Yeah, I just want to highlight, I think, again, once again, the, the potential issue is if you allow one person to speak for longer than three minutes and you allow all other individuals to only speak for three minutes, there is a question of why that allowance was made for that individual, not everybody.
And this is what happens always, especially on the, for the hearings. You usually have people are for it and people are against it. And I think allowing them to do that, allow to hear both sides of the issues makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. So one of our recommendations was, in addition to kind of mirroring what was in public comment, was to also carve out the option for the presiding officer with the consent of the body to separate groups. So you can hear equally from each group for whether they're for or against a particular item.
And then also too, with the hearing portions, you know, some of those land use hearings, a lot of people will have written comments. They summarize and hand in the written comments to the hearing too. So you provide written and oral summary. And three minutes is quite a bit of time to provide succinct remarks.
This wouldn't apply though to hearing examiner at all, right?
So the other thing included in the draft tonight is just a, like I mentioned, a public comment script. This would be something that would be available and would reflect all of the updates that the council decides to move forward with. But basically, it would allow for our presiding bodies to have a detailed step-by-step script of how to open public comment, what to happen if, you know, certain public comments come up, like hate speech, and how you might be able to address it, you know, after comments are made. And so it just gives our advisory boards, as well as the council and our presiding officers, another tool for their tool belt for opening public comment to be reflective of the policy adopted by the city council.
Yes.
And the other item was just some more additional notes on public comment and really just providing information on, you know, what to do if there is a disruption at a meeting and what would constitute hate speech and what constitutes hate offenses. So just again, giving more information, more tools for our advisory boards and also for our staff liaisons as well to be able to help in circumstances where this may arise in the future or other incidents may arise in the future. So council, that is all of the draft policy. I do want to make a note that those last two items aren't necessarily included in the policy. They're just follow-up items for resources. I've got a lot of feedback, I think, and good direction from the council, and I really appreciate the robust conversation. And we'll put this information together and come back to the council at a later date to review an updated draft.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Okay. Then let's go on to boards, commission and committee reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor.
Uh, one quick report. Thurston County EDC met on April 24th. We met at New Market Skill Center. It was my first time being at New Market Skill Center and being able to see what they do there. And, and as you guys know, it's a high school extension, which, you know, kind of gets kids into, into the trades. They offer hospitality, human services, cosmetology, culinary arts. We actually ate lunch from their kitchen there, public safety and security, criminal justice, firefighting, EMS, JROTC, vet, professional medical careers, medical assistance, science and health. And we, we got to hear from the, the president of, of New Market, who is excited about some new programs and that they will be bringing out. The, the audit for the year 2023 is coming up. The board has established an audit committee that will oversee that effort. The Economic Development District is coming along and it's anticipated that the district will be fully functional by the end of August. Some of the things that came up in the Board of Directors Roundtable discussion were the Tomar Brewery, the, the new phase for a regional athletic complex, small business, small business credit initiative, joint animal services, the Washington Center for Women in Business. We got a kind of a, a presentation on that. So for, for the years 2014 through 2023, they have had 1,372 clients, 6,200 counseling sessions, 171 support business starts, and have created 231 jobs. The total fiscal impact is just under, well, just a little bit over 2.7 million. For 2023, 339 businesses were served, 31 new businesses starts and 292 businesses were counseled, 47 scholarships for technical assistance. For 2024, 40 brand new business clients so far this year. And so we were able to recap that. The South Thurston Economic Development Initiative, which is called STEDE, and I'm hoping to want to be, one day that I'll say South Thurston Economic Development Initiative enough times where I say STEDE and you guys know what I'm talking about. So they submitted a grant to the USDA office for $99,500 proposal. If funded, it'll give capacity for building resources for communities served by STEDE, which is kind of our South Thurston, Bucota, Rainier, a little bit of Yelm and so on. So the grant scored a high enough level to move on from the state review to the national review. So exciting for that part of the county. Additionally, they secured three $39,000 grants for the town of Bucota, the We Love Rainier program and Tenino Community Service Center Food Bank. These, these grants are part of a pilot project to build capacity in those areas. You guys are well aware of the Ag Park that is going in, in Tenino, which is, you know, the big design there is to stop sending our, our agricultural jobs to other states. And we want to retain some of that, that economic empowerment here in Thurston County. And if all works well, then a lot of, of our agricultural processing will happen in South Thurston County. So very exciting for, for, for us as a county as a whole. Uh, let's see. In, in some of the CEO roundtable stuff, the, the Thurston Economic Development Council is, is working with Site Location Partnership to build out the network for recruitment of investment into Thurston County. So like some other businesses, we, we gather leads and, you know, work those leads to see if there are some, some industries or some, some mid to large size businesses that would be interested in doing business here in Thurston County. So the, the, the idea is to, to meet with these businesses and meet with, you know, landowners and developers to see if, if our county is attractive to some, some, some people who might be interested. So ideally, right now, we'll be doing at least one of those a month or, or 12 a year. And with that, I would love to, to bring the city into some of that and see if there's, you know, I know we've built out a lot. And I think we've done a great job. And there's some other areas in the county that could use some development. And, and so the idea is that, you know, we, we bring some development to some other parts of the county. And so I'll, I'll be able to, to brief a little bit more on that later in the year, especially if some of these leads really work out. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein.
So I have two reports tonight, and due to the late hour, I'll keep them very short. Medic one EMS council met on April 25th. We had eight people in our most recent paramedic testing, six of the eight passed, and five of those six have interviews with local departments. So we anticipate bringing on several new paramedics. The board, the, the board approved the recommendation of the new bylaws to the Board of County Commissioners. And I actually will be going to their meeting tomorrow morning to present it to the county commissioners for their hopeful adoption. And the work has begun on the locate, locating of the new medic unit that will be introduced in early '25. It looks like that will probably be in Tomwater because when you look at the call volume and where, where it best meets the needs of covering, coverage, that, that worked out to be the best location. Thurston 911 TCOM met on May 1st. Just a couple of things there. We had a camera replaced, security camera replacement project that was put on hold due to a labor strike. So that project will happen at some point. Really happy to report that we are down to only one unfilled FTE position at TCOM. That's the first time in, I think I've been on that committee for at least 10 years. I think this is the, by far the closest we've come to being fully staffed. So that's really great news. And last, we received a pretty detailed update on the radio project that everyone's heard me talk about for the last several years. Believe it or not, that project started back in 2017 is when this conversation started with contracts with Motorola being signed in 2019. Finally, in this last couple of weeks, we have secured the permits from Thurston County for the radio tower that took close to four years to get. But it's, it's now secured and we'll be able to put up that tower, which is really good. The last kind of sticking point as far as infrastructure is we have a tower that needs to be. far as infrastructure is we have a tower that needs to be worked on in DuPont, which is actually on the base, it's actually on JBL on property. The process of getting things done through them makes the county look easy. So it's been a long process. It has to go through the Corps of Engineers, it had to go out to Fort Bragg. It's moving through the process. And the anticipation is that going, the cutover to the new system being in the third quarter of this year. So that is our, that is our hope. And that is my report.
Well, thank you. Councilmember Stedman is no longer on this meeting, but he informed me that he does not have a report. And so Councilmember Cox?
Okay, I have three reports, but I'll try to make them really fast. Intercity Transit Authority met on May 1st. Their marketing and communications director, who has on-boarded since my prior term on there, Nick Demarest, presented a marketing and communications update with a full range of social media, branding, all kinds of things that I think show great promise in marketing intercity transit to the community. We had a review of the May service changes, which are, well, I won't go into details, but they're on the website, and they're getting us much, much closer to what service looked like before the epidemic. We also had a discussion on whether to implement a stipend for the Intercity Transit Community Advisory Committee. They've been watching Lacey, and so it was a good discussion on that. We heard an update on the Zero Fair Demonstration Project, which still has a couple of years to go. We heard that, you know, intercity transit has been kind of a national model, and a lot of interest in us, and it's starting to take root in other communities, particularly smaller ones. It probably wouldn't work in King County, because a much bigger share of their budget relies on fairs. But for us, it's a good deal.
Not only that, but our sister city took notice, and they implement zero fare in our sister city in Poland. So it's become international.
Yay, okay. We have a long-range planning retreat coming up this Friday. The last time they had one of those treats, retreats, it ended up initiating the, what do they call it? Anyway, the project, shoot, I forget the name of it, but that led to the campaign to go, you know, to get the sales tax.
Oh, yeah.
And ultimately ended up in the zero transit. And in the big news department, intercity transit is the international bus rodeo champion.
Again.
Again. They won out over 45 other teams from around the country and Canada.
Wow.
And this was driver and mechanics. So there's a lot to be proud of there. LOT met on April 10th. We reviewed industry-specific effective utility management framework. And the importance of this is it can serve as an underlying structure to LOT's next strategic plan. It's under the Affordable Housing Support Program. We approved an application from Olympia to use the shared pool funds for connection fee rebates at the low-income Lansdale Point project. And we received an overview and 2024 update of LOT's safety program. And finally, we received a, an update on the next major complex capital effort in the Digestor System Improvements Project. LOT 2 had a retreat on April 26, and it was a day-long retreat designed to provide staff guidance on a range of topics that chart the future of LOT. So it was an enjoyable retreat. And let's see, Regional Housing Council met on April 24th, and we looked at the, a preservation and reinvestment initiative for community enhancement. It's called PRICES, the acronym for it. It's a grant application, if received, for $25 million. And this comes out of Olympia, and what they're proposing to do is create a resident-owned manufactured home park. So they will be up against State Department of Commerce for the same funding pool. So it remains to be seen. So we did also hear that Commerce has another $2.4 million for us for homeless services. So we're looking into how to get that money distributed. And we approved a $72,000 appropriation from the emergency fund to repair damaged showers that were leaking through the flooring and creating damage at Community Use Services. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Vasquez?
Thurston Regional Planning Council met last Friday. One of the first things that we worked on was the annual performance review for Mark Daly, which is a kind of a cool process to be a part of. And I'm the chair this year, so I was running that process. So that was interesting to be on the inside of that. But the short version is, he continues to do very well. He got a very solid performance review from the whole council and from the staff of that organization. We approved the Unified Planning Work Program for the next year, which includes projects that are, all the stuff that TRPC is going to be working on around the region, whether it's federally funded, state-funded, and including some projects that don't have funding yet, but that are on the list in case funding becomes available. We also had a summary, like a review of the 2024 Call for Projects process. So we've got four different significant funding streams that we're going to be pulling down and then allocating. And the Unified Planning Work Program is a part of that. But TRPC is set to allocate and program over $19 million in federal grant funds for projects between 2025 and 2030. So we'll be working on that. There's also additional funding just for the rural communities, because sometimes they don't have the resources to compete for the other federal dollars. So we've set aside $550,000 for rural community support program funds. We talked a little bit about the way in which we decide which projects will get which funding streams. And then on, you know, May 8th, the TPB is going to do their final review of the process and the details, and then make a recommendation to TRPC, and we will take action on that on June 7th. We also had a briefing on the congestion management study. There are a couple of roads in the region that are areas we want to focus on for future congestion mitigation. So we had a comprehensive presentation on how we decide which roads are the ones we want to focus on to reduce congestion in the future. And for Board of Health, we meet next Tuesday, May 14th, and I did want to put a shout out, we're going to be focusing on Maternal Mental Health Month. That's our topic du jour at the upcoming Board of Health meeting. And it is a really significant issue in our community, especially related to like postpartum depression, that for a long, long time wasn't something that the medical community focused on, but has huge negative impacts on families. So we're trying to uplift that and make sure people are aware. We're doing education and providing resources to families to try to address that challenge. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Dunning?
I have nothing to report.
Okay, Deputy Mayor said that you missed something in this report, you want to go back to you?
I did. The Washington Center for Women in Business, whose statistics I quoted earlier, is having their annual Inspire Conference, and I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss that. So that will be May 23rd at the Lacey SPSCC Conference Center.
Okay. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Saying none. Thank you all for hanging in here today. It's an exceptionally long meeting. I just want to give a shout out to our city manager, who is on no time, because he just got back from Europe, and he's jet lagged, so let's get him home as soon as possible. With that, we reached the end of our agenda, so without objection, I'll call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey.